I'll be calling this board meeting to order in just a moment. Can we please call the comments while SPS TV takes us live? After a five second pause, I will call us to order. This is Director Mack. I'm now calling the board's special meeting to order at 4:30 PM. For the record, I'll go ahead and call the role. Director DeWolff has indicated he won't be here until 5:00. Director Hampson? Director Hampson? Director Harris?
Present.
Director Hershey?
Hello?
Hello. Director Rankin?
Present, hi.
Hi. Director Rivera Smith?
Present.
And this is Director Mack. Director Hampson, have you joined? Okay, well, for the record, Director Hampson and Director DeWolff aren't presently on the line, but hopefully they'll join. The superintendent is also present, as well as staff, who'll be presenting as we move through the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely, consistent with the governor's proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this remote meeting, I'll ask for participants to ensure that you are muted when you're not speaking. There will not be a public comment opportunity. Staff will be working to administer the meeting and maybe muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear from directors and staff. We have two work sessions today. The first will be the district scorecard and operations dashboard work session. This will be followed by a work session on the 2020 board evaluation and 2021 board goals. I'm going to now hand it over to Superintendent Juno to begin the district scorecard and operations dashboard work session, beginning with the district scorecard. But I also want to provide some context that there's a lot of slides here and I understand we're going to hear from five different staff and each of them will present their slides and will have an opportunity after their individual presentations to take comments. So there'll be five different opportunities for directors to comment and question as we belong. So, and we have an hour and a half for this section. Sorry for the Director Hampson's here. Yes, welcome. Thank you for letting me know and letting us all know. And with that, I think we can go ahead and hand it over to Superintendent Juno to go ahead and start us off. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Mack. I won't take up much time, but just kind of want to introduce the work that's happening here. The, these are measurements that are board-approved measurements, as you remember, things that cover like culturally responsive workforce, safe and welcoming schools, on-time graduation, college and career readiness. So staff are here to really discuss that, but we, I want to start with like a disclaimer just because of the situation we're in with the COVID-19 pandemic and the school closures that really has impacted the availability of data for several of these measures. As you know, we canceled state assessments were canceled, so we do not have 2019-20 progress data to share for third grade ELA or fifth and seventh grade math proficiency goals. We did still produce attendance and discipline, measures like that, but those are limited to data collected from September 2019 to March 11th, to the date that we closed our buildings. As we go through this, the measures that are impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic will be marked with an asterisk. So you'll see that specific targets for student measures are not displayed in this year's report. There is target information in the appendix, but of course that is subject to change in the future pending analysis and research about the impact of the pandemic on our goals. Progress, the first section that you'll hear, culturally responsive workforce, those measures are displayed because they were not as greatly impacted as the pandemic for this last school year. So just kind of wanted to start with that disclaimer so we're all on the same page about what you will see and what you won't see. And right now I'd like to turn it over to Chief Cod for culturally responsive workforce.
Thank you, Superintendent Juno. Good evening, everybody. This is Clover Cod, Chief of Human Resource. As you are well aware, there are two goals inside of the priority of culturally responsive workforce. The first is that we will improve culturally responsive professional practice. And the second is that we will increase the diversity of staff in schools and central office at the management and director levels and above. The data presented here tonight are for the targets that have already been outlined in the strategic plan, and I believe those are part of the appendices of this presentation. So you'll see in this first slide that our staff is becoming increasingly more and more diverse. Just as sort of you as a benchmark, we've got 3,800 classroom teachers. And so to move the needle on the overall makeup of the workforce, we've got to do an exceptional job in recruiting, which I'll talk to you about in just a minute. In terms of teacher leaders, teacher leaders are our career ladder teachers. They're formal leadership roles that teachers take on. They're paid additional compensation to take on those roles either at the district level or within their schools. We do have a goal to increase the diversity, as you can see here. It dipped down 1%, but our school leaders, we're doing actually quite well with the school leader makeup of our workforce. And then at central office, so any position that's grade 69 or above, you will see that we've made significant progress in that area as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. So recruitment, hiring, retention, there are only two ways to increase the overall diversity makeup of our workforce, and that is you've got to do better recruiting and then you've got to retain the people that you have. So in terms of classroom teachers for this last recruiting class, we call them recruiting class of the 2021 school year, 36% of our recruits and those that we hired this school year identify as a person of color. 54% of our school leaders that we hired this recruiting class identify as a person of color. And in central office leadership roles, 55% identify as a person of color. When it comes to the retention of our classroom teachers and our school leaders, we've got the 93% retention rate from one year ago and for our classroom teachers and 89% for our school leaders. The five-year retention rate, which is not posted here, is hovering right around 66% for both our educators of color and all other educators. Yes, in our district, we're not seeing a real differential between in race, between the retention data over the five-year period of time. And at some other time, we can talk more about that. Next slide, please. So cultural responsiveness training. We have two different targets here of which we were trying to make progress on. And the first is that we would look at the percentage of certified staff that are complete some type of cultural responsiveness training. And we've outlined that as one of the series. It's also in, I believe, in the appendices, but it's it's the racial equity literacy series. It is the culture responsive teacher leadership series. Could be foundational coursework, could be building leadership 102 with the focus on racial equity, or it could be the ethnic studies series. And all of these are more than a one-time course. It's courses where you receive several hours of training throughout the course of the year. And so we exceeded our target. We have 41% of our certified staff who have now completed cultural responsiveness training. And going over to the next part of the slide and foundational coursework, you are probably aware that the 101 series is for our first-year teachers and that the 201 series is for our second and third-year teachers. And so we have exceeded our targets for both first-year teachers and the second and third-year teachers for taking the foundational coursework last year, which we're really proud of because last year was like the first year that we implemented the 201 series. So next slide, please. Well, actually, I'm going to stop and open it up to questions before turning it over to Wyatt Jesse.
Thank you, Dr. Cod.
Go ahead and go down the list in alphabetical order, starting with Director Hampson.
I thank you. I think I just had one question on what is included in central office leaders? Is that what you call?
Yes. So we are measuring, we're really looking at management positions. So as you know, there are people that work at central office that work in our schools. Some are classified, represented by unions, some are nonrepresented. But the real target here and the target that we set in the strategic plan is that we would look at central office management and leadership positions. So anybody in a grade 69 or above is considered management. And so when we talk about the diversity of central office leaders increasing, we're talking about those management positions.
Okay. That's all from me for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Harris.
Pass for now. Thank you.
Okay, Director Hershey?
Hey, so great presentation on this. One thing that I have is just a request. Moving forward, I want to start thinking about representation of our staff in relation to the students that we identify as farthest from educational justice. So it would be really great to see a slide where for our identified target populations that we're trying to uplift, we could see how are they being represented in our staff? Just to break it out beyond POC, just to see if there are any targeted areas where we could potentially make more gains.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Back, yes.
Thank you, Director Hershey. Director Rankin?
I, the leap from 13% to 40-something percent, I think? Yeah, of the cultural responsive training. What, I mean, that's a pretty big jump. Was that just because there was more opportunity to take that training? Was there a change in expectation? Or can you tell me more about that and then how obviously we can keep that number going up?
Yeah. So in the 18-19 school year, you'll remember, we did not yet have a strategic plan, right? I believe it was approved June of 19, if I'm not incorrect. And so we did have some ad hoc cultural responsiveness training that was going on, you know, prior to the strategic plan. But when we adopted the strategic plan, we were very intentional with the cultural responsive work group, which we have, to look across the courses that we have and actually wrote them into the strategic plan work plan and kind of codified, these are the courses that we need to be offering so that educators are being not just exposed, but have opportunities to get that training that's a little bit more ongoing, so not just like a one-shot class, if you will. And so there was a concerted effort from central office to go out into schools and offer these trainings on what we call those early release screen days. And so we served 1,355 educators in the 1920s school year with these courses. So I really do attribute it to the strategic plan, just really bringing some some formalness, if you will, around it.
That's great. Thank you. I would love to see it get to 100.
Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the same charts here, the cultural responsive training. And I'm wondering, what is, what was the target? Because there's no number next to it for the 2019-20 year?
Yes, I know it's in the appendices, but let me see if I can, if I have it offhand. So 1920 for first-year teachers with 27%. No, excuse me, for the overall cultural responsiveness training, excuse me, for the 1920s school year, our target was 27%. And you can see we vastly outperformed in that area. For the foundational coursework 101, it was 70%. And for foundational coursework 201, it was 29%.
Thank you. And so I'm guessing, I mean, I'm pretty sure, none of these trainings are required, correct?
Correct.
So I don't think I'm alone in saying I would like them to be required. I think we've talked about this before and wondering, how do we make that happen?
Well, that's a really good question. We've got very limited time in our school day, school week, school year for professional development. We do have the early release days and we do have a site-based management system where schools vote on the professional development that they would like to bring to their schools. So that is part of a kind of a structural or systematic. I don't want to say barrier because I believe in site-based management and I do believe that the educators that are closest to the work should be discussing the kinds of professional learning opportunities that they need. We did do the required course this past try day where everybody, it was mandatory and everybody does take the try-day training. That is one place where it shows up. But we, and even though that was sort of like a one-day, six-hours, we actually didn't count that, Director Rivera Smith, because it was a one-time PD offering, if you will. When we talk about the cultural responsive training, it's an ongoing series. It's usually around 30 hours worth of training to complete the series. That's what we wrote into the strategic plan. To make that required would probably take some renegotiation with the Seattle Education Association to make it required.
Okay, yeah, I would really love to see that happen because, again, I don't fault the schools at all for, they have to choose between probably a good list of valuable trainings. So I see, you know, to say that they didn't all pick it, you know, I can see how they had to make some hard choices there. So finding a way that we can make this available, I know clearly, like you said, it's going to take negotiations and that's, and that's fine. I think that's worth doing because we owe it to the students to make sure they all have teachers who have taken these trainings and are prepared to give them the education that they end, you know, the supports they need. So, so yeah, I mean, I definitely appreciate the increases. That is a great leap from 13 to 41 and even 68 to 76, you know, that, I know these are all steps along the path, so I appreciate that. I definitely just want to see how we can move forward in making these, getting them to all of our teachers and staff. So no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it's my turn. And do you mind flipping back to the one that talked about the workforce? Is it the previous slide or the slide before? Kind of tacking on to Director Hershey's comments. When I look at the numbers here too, it's, when it's all combined, it doesn't help show the actual diversity. And the having, I think the definition, we've been discussing this in depth in the CM Advisory Committee about what the definition of diversity is for the district. And my understanding is it's the diversity of our student body. And so in adding on to Director Hershey's comments that it would be helpful to see the more granularity, I think I would like to see the granularity of the data of our student body next to that so that we can see that comparatively, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I think something I can ask my team to try to put together for a Friday memo in the future. It's not one of our strategic plan targets, right? Like what we're reporting on tonight is really what was already approved in the strategic plan and those targets. But we do have more granular data. And so let me talk with my staff to see what we might be able to produce and put together for you all.
Thank you. And now we can move on to slides seven through nine, which are around attendance and discipline. Mr. Wyatt Jesse?
Good evening, Wyatt Jesse, Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement. Thank you for having me this evening. So I'm going to present on the next two slides, really capturing the work underneath safe and welcoming schools. In particular, the two formal key performance indicators or measures that I'll be discussing are attendance and discipline. We also know that we have other pieces of data that we use for progress monitoring, such as the misinstructional log, we have survey data. We also have just the structural data that we have, ability to distribute resources. Those are some of the things that we also use in connection to this and even things like staff continuity. But for this evening, I just wanted to really highlight quickly some of the data points. Some of this, this data in particular is, is a lot of the data that we've shared previously to the board. But I also wanted to give you the story behind the data. So you'll have here on the left is the regular attendance district-wide K through 12 for our African-American males and our students of color further from educational justice over the last four years. Obviously, we had some adjustments due to COVID-19 as Superintendent Juno was highlighting for us here in attendance this last spring. And then also for discipline in the, in the spring as well, starting in March. But the, you can see on the attendance that we've been going along and had a uptick this list last year. And then for particularly for discipline, we've been trending with a significant precipitous drop in the number of suspensions for the students we are targeting here in our strategic plan. That really was what I wanted to get into is about the story of why that is happening. In particular, we've been focused on discipline for now, the last, now we're in our fifth year of focusing in particular around discipline as a district. We did things anywhere from racial equity trainings to the positive behavioral intervention support teams that we have at school sites, to reviewing our students' rights and responsibilities and having student voice and their impact and having community give input on that particular tool that we use across all 104 schools, as well as things like relationships and the outlay of things like also ruler. Those things got us only so far. Those are, those are items that got us initial jump on some of the lowering of our discipline rates. And of course, they do help us with some level of our attendance. But also the really are the two parallel things of where we've been working the last couple of years and that we needed to move forward is in particular around, one, what are we doing for the services and supports like social-emotional learning, guidance and lessons that were so good in our strong start this year and something that we've had a positive impact, including in summer program. We've just recently heard from SEA saying they really enjoyed those things. Very helpful for our teachers across the system and most certainly our students. But where are mental health supports? The board has been so kindly to help fund mental health supports and interconnected system framework, working with our outside agencies, care coordination, really thinking about how can we get basic services and work with CBOs across the city. That's something we've been in joint effort now for three years and then mentoring as well. Things that, again, that the board has been great to support us with. The work that you can see actually has real impact on students. And so we feel very proud about that. And I'll talk about the other piece of parallel work on the next slide. Next slide, please. So the data that you have presented here are a list of select schools that were identified underneath a program from the Department of Education, in particular, the Office of Special Education Programming. There's a program, it's got this long name, Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services. It's a mouthful, but what it really is intended is to really help us figure out for districts all across the United States is where do you have a level of disproportionality? In particular, here for Seattle, was around discipline for students who identify as African-American with IEPs. So as identified three years ago by the state and using that information, we came up with a comprehensive plan to address the systemic and disproportionate discipline for African-American students. What in alignment with our strategic plan? And again, if we hadn't done some of that previous work, coupled with building out our services and supports, we wouldn't be able to get the detailed success that you can see here in this chart. In light, we in particularly have been working with elementary schools the two previous years. And then this last year, well, basically these last two years, we've been working with seven secondary schools. That is where we've had tremendous impact with those schools in lowering their disciplinary rates. A lot of our discipline had come from really primarily the middle school, at the middle school level, and we knew as a system we needed to address that. This plan further supported us in that work. And then so what that really did look like particularly was director of school, a director within special education and a director within coordinated behavioral health, leading learning support teams, which is those cross-departmental teams coming in at those seven focus school sites here, six of middle schools and one high school, to really think about how can we lower our disciplinary rates. And I would like to remind us all that disciplinary rates are a downstream measure and really is something that you have to go upstream to really see what are the things that are in place or not in place that really better to serve our students. Because it is an adult issue, a systems issue, to really thinking about how we serve our students. And so within that, we knew things like, hey, you really need to think about how you can build up student leadership. Where is student voice in your things? Do you have classroom meetings or advisory? How are you doing things that are really engaging in your curricular stance? Do you even have things like a position of threshold where you greet students at the door each and every day using student names? Things like that that we know are super powerful have impacts on our discipline rates. And so while we have changed and provided training, now we are in a place where we really need to get to those upstream measures, those things of exactly how we're providing services, the betterment of education, as well as, again, those supports like mental health. I will lead you here to see the data. I will highlight a few of the schools. I will take Washington Middle School, for example. It's on the second row in 2016-17 with 102 separate state reportable incidences, which means it was a suspension, was for us, for students who identify as African-American and did have an IEP. So 102 separate incidences. It does not mean the number of students. And you can see as time gone, went on, we kept working with them. And then so for even the 1920, 34 was our target, 19 incidences last year. And so we knew we were even trending, even though we were coming short on, on March, we were on track to meet our goal. And then a lot of our elementaries, anywhere from schools like Emerson or Laurelhurst or Madrona, we really were working to get ourselves in a place we really were working to get ourselves in a place where we could have far less suspensions. And we were not having any, any of those suspensions all the way up into March this last school year. Because again, we're focusing at those school sites, really not only just thinking about, oh, how can we just not suspend? But it really is the services to our students and working with their families and having staff change how they address students and involve students that we knew had this kind of power. So I just wanted to bring those things in light. We continue working forward here during COVID. Obviously, our shift is really now primarily on attendance. We're not in a position to really doing any suspensions. So we're really looking to target ourselves to very, very low discipline rates this school year. And so moving forward, really teeing us up for the, the 21, 22 school year. With that, I'll, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse. I'll go ahead and start, well, call and see if, President DeWolfe, have you arrived? It is five. Okay, not here yet, that's fine. Director Hampson.
Yeah, so do we have any detailed attendance information?
You mean like a breakdown by, in particular for schools? Or which, which kind of breakdown are you referring to, Director Hampson?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I, I'm still kind of, I know there's some data out there, but I don't have a sense of, I know what it looks like at an individual student level. But what's the aggregate looking like specifically for African-American male students?
Well, that would be.
Class, class attendance versus, you know.
Yeah, so that, that typically on that attendance, it is for us, a lot of the attendance, and in particular for that, even that group of students, is at the high school level. A lot of our issues, higher rates of attendance come, or, or lack of attendance comes at the high school level for us. And then we can track it, like I think you were referring to down to the class. So we do look at that, that level of data as well.
And, but we don't have anything to report at this time about this year, or?
Well, I've given that, I've given that previously in some of the Friday memos. I think there was another session that I gave that outline for the, both the attendance and the online usage. I, I, this was reporting back on the bigger summatives as, as part of the dashboard. But I'm happy to, to give more, more detail out to the board or to you in particular, whatever you would like.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we've definitely had to make, when we talk about attendance now, we're, we're not, it, it looks different this year, so.
It looks, yeah, it's a different, it's a different, it's, it's, it is an apples and orange. The numbers are so radically different. Because what I do hear from schools is, you know, as much as I can have them log in and our attendance rate for, you know, African-American males can be at 93%, you know, for attendance rate right now is what it is. I also know that I'm also hearing, hey, they can log in and then be there and account for attendance, but are they really engaged, right? Like that comes into some more subjective measures that come in place for that.
Well, and they do get attendance for each class. And so less about, from, looking at it from a punitive standpoint, and more looking at it from a, you know, being, actually being provided education standpoint. Because this is 2019, 20 data that we're looking at here, so.
Yeah.
It seems like.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, yeah, so I'm just, I, I would, I'm hungering for some overall data about the, the current year in terms of, of where we are on an interim basis.
Just for clarity, it sounds like a reasonable request to be making. Are you asking for a follow-up information in the Friday memo or something about?
Yeah, I mean, I could go back and look at what we've had before. And, and I'll just leave it to other directors to, to provide additional clarity on that. But I think, you know, as we know, for middle and high school, we, we, we do need to, to look at whether, how they're, you know, trending. And, and I'm, I think it's our responsibility to take a look at that quite a bit more deeply this year. Which is, again, as we started this whole presentation, that metrics are not as we expected them to be. And we tried to allow for that, you know, in the evaluation. So then we have to decide what, what, what we do need to look at. And, and may, and that may not be the right metric. I'm just, I'm putting that out there as something that I, that is of great concern to me on a, on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, great, thank you. Is, is there anything else, Director Hampson?
That's it for now, thank you.
Okay, Director Harris?
So do we have an ETA of receiving that information and should that be in the minutes?
I was going to sum up at the end of the meeting, I'm, I'm personally taking notes, I assume staff is as well. But I, I heard the request for the workforce diversity granularity information, and I'm hearing a request for a follow-up on current attendance data. That's what I'm hearing, and I was going to reiterate that at the end of questions and the end of this section. Mr. Jesse, is that your understanding as well, or?
That is correct, and I got that. And I, obviously today's Thursday night, it won't be good in tomorrow, tomorrow's Friday memo. But I most certainly can get it. I can even hustle, maybe try to hustle to get it, it's not that hard. I can even give screenshots. If you give me, anybody wants to send me an email of some of the details, I can, I can do that too. I can get more deeper analysis if you want to give me specifically demographic groups and timelines, I can, I can do that as well.
Okay, Director Harris?
Yeah, my question is, we, we emphasize these seven schools. What are the rest of our middle and high schools look like?
But, yeah, that's, they, these are the ones that were flagged because of the longitudinal data. So these, these are based on exactly this student population that we have here. And so who had the highest rates for three years, the preceding years? That was actually, Forrest was on those three years that you have there, 16, 7, 17, 18, and 18, 19. That's why they have the highest rates for this. And then all, the other schools would have lower, lower rates in these, these schools if they are talking about their peers at the various grade levels.
So that means then in the last three years, we haven't had any other schools but these seven with any spikes? Is that correct?
Well, for longitudinal data, there can be a spike in one particular year. I don't think that's new to, I know you and I have had, you know, those kind of conversations that, you know, you can have outlier years. It is about trending, and so we wanted to identify where it looked like there was systemic issues. And so we wanted to address that in a targeted fashion. And that's what's mandated by the federal government.
So the federal government says take your top seven? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused here, I apologize.
No, they, they say that you do have to take a targeted approach to where, how are you going to address the issue? Where is it? Why would you target them? You have to come up with a rationale. Our rationale was, hey, a lot of our primary issues are at select schools. Those are the select schools that you see in front of you, so it's not just seven. And then we did an additional layer on that was to say, hey, based on this data, we were noticing in particular these seven secondary schools, where, where is that? And then we, we just, that was another part of this plan, in addition to just not just the elementaries. But we pivoted again to these seven secondaries, because the timing is right. And we were able to wrestle with them and, and to address that issue, as you can see, so far, so far successfully.
And it looks really impressive. I guess my next question is then, do you pick another seven school cohort to focus on? That is one layer down in terms of data? What happens now? What's the system here?
I, I love that question for sure. That question is that it is, you know, we're really in a stance now to do all schools for two particular reasons. One, we are now lowering the rates of discipline so that we're no longer in a more emergent, right now, like I said, downstream, just reactive mode. We're going to move to a proactive. And then we're also, again, in those learning support teams, cross-departmental, you know, you've got special education. You have cross, you have the coordinated behavioral health, you've got other curricular experts that are there. Those things, those folks working together can address these issues. So to me, it is now about being able to get on it for all 104 schools. It doesn't have to just be targeted in the previous fashion that we've done it.
But does that mean then that a year from now, we'll see 104 schools instead of seven emphasis schools?
Well, one, we do have to write a special fantastic report for both the federal government and OSPI. So I have to continue along those measures. But for reporting to the board, we're happy to pull out the data for all 104 schools. These are just the focus from this plan.
Look forward to that, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, Director Hershey.
Thank you, um, yeah, so a similar request to my previous questions of Chief Cod. But then, kind of in a sense echoing some of the statements made by Director Hampson. I think just for me, in thinking about, you know, the current situation that we're in, I know that this was not an explicit conversation before the development of these slides or was, or wasn't necessarily in the scope of the presentation. But I, I would really like to see some more drill down detailed data, especially around our black boys and what access to education and attendance looks like for them from the beginning of the year to now. And then like when we, I guess you could say delivered the majority of our devices. I, I really want to see longitudinally, as much as we can over the past few months, with the implementation, especially of one-to-one, with all that we're doing, with getting hotspots to families, seeing some type of longitudinal growth, you know, to see, okay, are these measures actually getting our kids to log on? And I, again, I want to make sure that I'm very clear. I know that that wasn't necessarily anticipated for this presentation. But I really would like to start using these opportunities to have data to get more into a real-time scenario additionally with, and then like also using it as a means for us to be accountable in a front-facing way to community. The Friday memo was great for people who have access to our system. But for folks who might be listening in from community, or for, you know, anybody who's looking for detailed information such as this, it's such a rarity that we get to have these types of presentations. I think that our community would appreciate it if we came, or, or at least start to consider what it would look like to have more real-time data, especially for these follow-up conversations that we're having. Because if we have, you know, your average family who might really care about this, but not as plugged into our system, might not even know where to go to access the Friday memo. So that would be my only request, again, is to just, you know, think about how could we get more, more current information in these types of presentations? Thank you, I'm really, you know, this is really encouraging. And yeah, I think I am, I think that really does it for me, appreciate it.
Okay, great, thank you. Director Rankin.
Thank you. Yeah, great to see these numbers go down. But I bet Chief Jesse that you know what I'm going to ask next. I'm wondering what is happening, so state reportable discipline incident, you mentioned, but other, folks might have missed it. That's an out-of-school suspension. So there's a lot, there's a lot of disciplinary actions and incidents that wouldn't be reflected here. And I am really interested to know, I mean, as much as, it's, it's great that we're not sending kids home for stuff that, you know, is, especially with an IEP, is, is something related to a disability and they're being actually punished for, for that instead of supported. So it is good to see these numbers go down. My concern is that there is still significant time when students are removed from the educational environment that just because they are not sent home is not reflected here. And then also incidences of restraint or other disciplines. So I know that at the state level, what's reportable is one thing. I would really like to see us as a district develop our own internal reporting. I know it's very inconsistent from building to building, and then very inconsistent from district to district, but actually makes it up to the state level. So some of this discipline data is really hard to see what's actually going on, especially with things like restraint that may not, that don't have as clear a reporting process, which is something, you know, that we're talking about with the isolation or restraint policy. But basically what I'm getting at is when students, particularly black students with disabilities, are being removed from their educational environment, we need to know about it. We need to know how often it's happening, and we need to know what is missing in terms of supports that is leading to the student being removed from the environment. And so I'm wondering how or what it would look like for us to have a, a district expectation of reportable, of, of district reportable incidents. If that's something that we can do, or if that's something that we do do that I'm just not up on. Because it's, it's the loss of instructional time. I mean, among many other things, but the loss of instructional time is, is really critical.
So, thank you. We, this state reportable counts in school suspensions as well, Director Rankin.
It does?
It does.
Okay.
Our standard is higher, so we count in, in school and out of school for us in our metrics. So that is how we, that is the rule that we use to report to you and on the strategic plan. Because that is exactly right, any kind of misinstruction that is through the form of discipline needs to be recorded and reported, and so we want that, that transparency. But we also want to make sure that we in turn have an ability to go in and have inquiry and work to figure out what is going on at school sites that we can help, you know, change our practices and our structures. The notion of the myth we have adopted, it's been five years, we have a misinstructional log. It's really a tool for, at the elementary level, for if there's misinstruction. Incidences at the elementary level, I mean, at the secondary level, really only include more, you know, the state reportable stuff, to your point, Director Rankin, I think you, you, you're very familiar with the ins and outs of, of elementary schools that, you know, when students are outside in the hallway or they're even a neighboring buddy classroom, you know, are they getting instruction in what is part of that? And that's, that is part of our work, and we do work with our elementaries to record that data. I think it's pretty consistent, I don't think it's completely reliable. Just because, you know, we, we continue to, you know, harp on, hey, that, that is actually, if your student has been out in that hallway, you know, for a meaningful period of time, 10 minutes or so, then they missed enough instruction that we would want that recorded. And that's how we train up on that for all our elementaries and Keds.
Well, I would love to see that data.
Okay, can I, can you clarify quickly what that data is? And does that tie into the, the previous request? Or is this something new and different?
It, it would be more, no, it's new and different, and it, and it, it doesn't, I mean, that could, like, I'm happy just to look at that.
Yeah.
With you at some point.
It's very school-level data, happy to look over it with you, Director Rankin, and, and you and I can talk about it at length.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you for that conversation.
And to other directors, please?
I, I, I hear, first of all, sorry, I want to note that President DeWolfe joined us at 5:07, I noticed. But I didn't note it now, so for record, if that could go in, thank you. And your question, President Harris', is whether or not this data would be shared. I would too have the same kind of question about.
Um, I, I would too have the same kind of question about, um, that data. Is that data that's reported in O S P I, in the O S P I report?
No, that data, that data. Yeah, it doesn't go to O S P I.
All right, uh, it sounds like there's not clarity on whether or not that would be reported out to the board. Or would, is just an individual board member request? I'm not sure if there's clarity on that.
I mean, I think the rest of the board would like to see trends in a, in an overview, I assume.
Okay.
Something reportable. I, um, but I also wanted to quickly echo the requests from Directors, um, Hampson and Hershey about current attendance. I know that's a little bit off target of this, but, um, the, uh, I know that, um. Folks are looking at the current status of, of Ds and Es that will become incompletes if not, um. Uh, addressed by the end of the semester. And I would be interested in seeing, uh, that data with what we're calling attendance data and how, how those things are. Are related, um, in terms of trying to, uh, measure engagement.
Um, with all due respect, uh, Director Rankin, uh, what I'm hearing here in terms of those requests that are kind of piling up is. Um, a fair amount of information that I think probably warrants its own work session or attend, uh, a, a special attention on say C and I committee. Um, because I, I, it, it, it's a lot and something that we probably do need to have a conversation on. So can I put a pin in that one as, uh, we move forward and making note of time, it's five twenty and. Uh, Director Rivera Smith is next on the attendance and discipline. We still have two more sections as well as the actual scorecard before, um, six o'clock. So Director Rivera Smith, please.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm feeling like maybe I should cut my question short. I hate to do that because I, I do have some questions, um. But in respect of time, um, I think I can just check in with, um, Chief Jesse via email later. I want to make sure we keep moving, so. Um, I will, I will, um, email to communicate my questions with him. Thank you.
Uh, great, thank you. My, um, my question, one question is about the, uh, clarification, um, at the bottom of the slides. About students of color for this from educational justice. Um, it says African American, Latinx, Pacific Islander, Southeast Asian and Native American students. Does that, it, it doesn't explicitly say African. Um, and so I'm wondering if say Somali students are being, uh, or Ethiopian are being excluded from this, um, list.
They, they are within that data set, uh, as identified, um, for the strategic plan. So when we say African American, that is include, um, in your reference, East African, uh, or students from East African descent.
Okay, so African American does include East African. Okay. Uh, thanks for that clarity. Um, and so then, uh, in the interest of time, going ahead and moving on to slides 10 and 11. Uh, regarding equitable access, um, Conci Pedroza.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you. Um, I'm just going to build off of what Chief Jesse's, uh, talking. Points about the C C I S work and, um, how our special education department continues, will continue to coordinate. Our supports for school teams around this work, um, and that will continue this year. Um, and additionally, we will build, build off this learning regarding C C I S strategies to build up on our strategies for our goals this year. So in the, in the realm of targeted universal approach. Um, this is my moment of putting that stake in the ground around, uh, our division's goals. Um, student support services will be zeroing in specifically to prioritize identification. Uh, of students for this from educational justice with special attention to black students with I E Ps. Um, and then black students and highly capable services. Um, our division, uh, everyone in the division, they are targeting this goal, um, as identified by zero zero three zero. Equitable access and each department lead, um, will prioritize equitable access for their goal setting, um, for their students. And then also the goal of leading others for anti racist actions, uh, for the adults in this, in, in their departments. Um, and the system has designed, uh, and we just, a reminder how the system has designed. Um, these are things that we have to work on undoing because the system has designed. And I'm talking the system, not only from the state level to our own, uh, system, how we label programs and services. Um, and it is our job to work at systemically and institutionally and individually to undo those impacts on our youth. Um, so I'm going to move, uh, towards intensive service pathways. Um, right here you have some slides in front of you and. Uh, you can make meaning from some of the data that you see in front of you and, um, in looking at the data. Um, I've decided to, uh, these are the goals that we're moving forward. We're going to target these specifically in these areas. But I did want to show you the three year trends. So in looking at the data that you can see that there are overall, um. Um, increases, uh, for students identified for intensive service pathways. Um, in the majority of student groups with the exception of, of, of Native American and Pacific Islander students groups. Um, the special education department is setting the goal to decrease the number of students. Um, as mentioned before, with the, uh, focus of students for this from educational justice. Um, I want to share that in nineteen twenty, the department, um, added, uh, additional components to their data system. This was last year to begin analyzing, um, in order to target supports, trainings and skill building for I E P teams. Um, um, one of the systems that we are trying to do is really think through what, we're looking not only at actually those numbers of students identified. In terms of their student categories, but we're also looking at trends in terms of, uh, different service pathways. So for example, we've noticed an overall increase of students identified for access services as one of those trends. And so we're beginning to look at it through a variety of lenses. Additionally, I want to share that, uh, last year, the case managers were provided a flow chart. Um, as a guide to support the database change of, of placement processes. Um, since the implementation, there has been a twenty five percent increase of school teams following the district's process. And, and, um, there's been, uh, uh, also our next steps are in reviewing, uh, actually. How those outcomes are supported that, that work. And additionally, we need to work on building up and increasing from twenty five percent of students following the process to hire. Um, and then I just also want to additionally share that the S C A, uh, special, uh, Seattle Public Schools, uh, Special Education Task Force. Also, um, has a goal in their work, um, alongside, so the, the members include past members, S C A members and department. Members and they want to support the work, um, at the practitioner level. Um, and they're reviewing, um, intensive service pathway placements with a goal to do a deep data dive. Into service placements, uh, with race, disability and regional trends. Um, also one of the goals is to, um, mitigate for implicit bias, um, stereotype threat and in order to support. Um, practitioners, uh, when they're making these very important decisions. Um, I'm going to go, uh, head to the next slide, please, around, uh, um, advanced learning. And then we'll do questions at the end. Um, and if you look here again, and we're, these were showing you three year, uh, data for the last three years. Um, and the, you'll notice that the data, this is, um, data in terms of, uh, uh, our students. Uh, and that is the referral data presented, um, this is not the referral data, this is the service data, but it, um, this is pretty accurate in terms of the last three years. Um, the efforts that we've had last year in terms of referrals have been very positive. And there's been an upward trend, uh, specifically around students from educational justice. But as you can, as you note, uh, very little movement in terms of the outcomes, uh, for identification. So, um, uh, that's work that we began started to build off of the task force work, uh, with the final report came due in January two thousand nineteen. So we're still building our processes. Um, some areas that we're working on is professional development to address racial bias in all parts of the system, including identification. Um, we've actually just hired a specialist who has a background in identification and racial equity. Um, and they've been doing, um, deep training, uh, every week with the advanced learning department to really understand. Um, the interplay of identification and its roots in, um, systemic, uh, racist practices. Um, they're also utilizing site based eligibility, eligibility decision making. Uh, and so part of that work is coaching and supporting, um, the M T S S structures within the schools. And also supporting the schools in their, uh, decision making processes. Uh, working with coaching and providing, um, some supports for school teams through that process. Um, and then I just want to add in there that we also are really thinking because due to the closures. Um, as you can imagine in March, a lot of assessments pieces happening. But the department is beginning to utilize, um, really rethink through a variety of qualitative and quantitative data measures. To mitigate the, um, impact of some of the in-person assessments that, um, that will be happening, um, for this year. Um, so I am going to pause there and, um, are there any questions? And I'm sure there's lots.
Yes, thank you. I'll go ahead and start with, uh, Director DeWolfe.
Thank you, Director Mack. Um, I don't have any questions at this time.
Uh, Director Hampson.
Uh, can you come back to me? Director Mack, can you come back around to me?
Yeah, I was speaking on mute. I said, I actually, I was making a joke, but yes, I'll try to remember, but I also tried to remember to actually hit the button and mute myself. So yes, thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll come back to you. Uh, Director Harris? Director Harris, are you with us?
I just took myself off of mute. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I appreciate team concept. I appreciate the goals. But what I'm having trouble connecting the dots with are the fact that we have so few. Uh, students with I E Ps in buildings getting hands on. And, and then I have trouble with the fact that. Training is going to be offered to special ed, but aren't inclusion students, general education students first. So, so this is retrospective data and I'm having trouble with it, given where we are at this moment in time. Thank you.
Uh, was there a specific question that you wanted to, was that just a comment, just to clarify, I wanted to make sure if you wanted a response?
Well, I guess I just want to register my frustration that, that we don't have a whole heck of a lot more of our inclusion students. Getting services right now and it, and it seems very frustrating to me, at least from what I hear from parents. What I hear from the special ed P T S A and what I see in social media. That this is all interesting information, but where we are right now is, um, problematic. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Director Hershey?
Uh, no questions for me at this time. Thank you.
Director Rankin? Thank you. Um, is it possible to go to the previous slide, please? Thank you. Um. Dr. Pedroza, I wonder, um, the increase in identification. Uh, wha- what do you think that comes from? Is that, is that more students being referred because needs are being better addressed? Or is that more students being referred for intensive service or going, being identified for intensive services? And, um, meaning, uh, less time in a general education classroom? Or is that maybe, maybe we can't say right now?
Well, yeah, I can say that we, uh, we can actually spend some time looking at that more, but, uh, it's a mix. When we're looking at the different types of pathways, right? Um, there, it's different. Some of it's, uh, for example, uh, it's race specific, right? There's some trends about race and then some of them are not. Um, and so I think we have to look at that, um, and we have to look at the programming and services that are being provided. Some of those same students are actually going, uh, it's a, for example, access, we said an increase of access. But as you know, many of the access students participate for much of their day in general education classrooms. So we'd have to look at it, um, and take a look at more broader data, but we have that data and we could spend some time looking at that. Or maybe I could bring that to a C and I committee.
That would be great.
Yep.
Um, and although, along with that, in the, uh, the S C A and S P S work group that's taking the deeper dive. Um, uh. Once that's sort of, uh, examined, is there any discussion of, um. Looking at what our service pathways are and how to, um. I guess better, I, better, better, better serve students in, um, with supports instead of these boxes.
Yeah, I believe that is the goal. Um, I, I, if I can share with you and when, when we do the C and I committee, I can share with you. Even if you look at their vision and mission work, um, their goal is to decolonize special education. That is one of their goals. And so, um, they, that's work we started last year. Uh, it's very exciting work. Um, it's, it is a bargaining group, so they, there is going to be some shifting back and forth. But this is a group that really wants to dig in and really rethink through how we are serving our students. With a focus of more inclusionary practices. So that is the goal of the group.
That's great.
And so we are working on that, but as you know, a lot of this work is outlined in the C B A. So it's actually pretty good that it's, it's pretty perfect actually that this is the group that usually sit on the bargaining teams. With our staffs that actually are all aligned in their thinking about, really thinking about how do we really have our students move more into the general education setting? Uh, to the, and to really be of, of a school, a district of inclusionary practices with really, um, uh, for the least restrictive environments for our students. So, um, I think that's exciting work, but as you know, it's, it's really outlined in the C B A, those pathways and, and those numbers. And so there's a lot more work that has to be done with this. So, but right now it's, it's started.
That's great. Thank you. Um, and I might've had another question about the next slide, but, um, I will pass for now.
Okay, Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm looking at this information and it's great, um, to have this and I'm thinking so that the, the title of this is equitable access to services. So I'm trying to bring it back to that for my questions, um, because it's for special ed students right now. Very few are reserving their services, correct? I mean, they're, um, they're identified for it, great. I mean, that's, that's part of the, it's halfway there, but then getting it. So then I'm wondering, do we, this is only, you're only showing us. Um, the intensive service pathways. Does that include five oh four students? Are they in this or are they separate and do we have data on them?
I guess we do have data and all of our five oh four students, we have them broken down by race. Um, actually, I will even share, we, even when we went into closure, um, Mia Williams and I worked through, um, a plan of, uh, when we targeted supports. Uh, at the secondary level, um, um, all the five oh four case managers had a list of, uh, students, African American students to, that they identified to really target and bring in supports for. So, uh, we've coordinated very closely with that office. I have that data. It is separate. It is separate. Um, but I can, if you, we can figure out how, uh, you also are a member of the C and I committees, uh, S S, C and I committee. So we can talk through how you would like that data brought forth in, in one of our updates. If you would like to do that, we can, we can work that through.
I, I would, I would. Thank you. Um, and then I'm wondering too, how are we, how are we defining right now access to services? Cause is this, is it measured by, by logins, by engagement? How, how are we, how are we measuring that? How, what, what do we call in access right now?
Okay, so, well, this data is to talk about our whole general education programming. And this is regarding programming for the last several years. Um, our students are in, when we talk about an intensive service pathway, we're talking about students. Who most of the time is spending their day in a more restrictive environment. Um, so their, their service provider typically is their classroom teacher in most cases. Um, and so that is part of the scheduling that happens at schools. Um, and so they are just as well as part of any of the regular attendance, uh, similar. So they, that, those are all being recorded, uh, those are all those. So when we talk about intensive service pathways, we're talking about the students that are in most likely in. More restrictive, um, environments. Um, and where many of their case managers or their teachers are actually, um, their teachers serving them in those settings. So they are in their classes most likely for most of the students. Does that answer your question?
Oh, no, kind of. So is it measured then by, by login, by attendance, by just?
Yes, all of that, they are measured by login and attendance, especially if they're in those classes. Yes.
Yeah, okay. No, yeah. All right. No, thank you. Um, and then I think for the next page was the highly capable page. Um, I, I had a question on that because you, you, we said it when we were looking at this, you said that this is showing identification but not outcomes. So are, is, are these students who it says referred into, do you actually get placed into highly capable pathway? Or is this, are these, what, what are we looking at here?
These are all the students that actually have been that, the, so I've made, wanted to make sure that we have a difference between referrals. Right? And then students being served. So if you look at the right hand side, it says count of. So if you look at the right-hand side, it says count of referrals for highly capable students. So you notice that there was an increase of referrals. So those are two different measures. So they're not the same slide. So those are the number of students. And as you can see, what I was referring to is we've had a huge effort on referrals. And so if you look at students further from educational justice, the increase of changes, African-American males by 90%, students further from educational justice, 48%. So our referral process, all of our efforts around referrals have been really great. However, if you look at our outcomes, these are students that actually went through the referral process, then actually were identified, and then were then placed into highly capable services. And if you look at the left, very little change within the last two years. So what I'm saying to you is, through this presentation, is yes, we've, we've got one thing down, the recruitment pieces, the referral pieces are down, but we need to really be focusing on the identification process. I'm showing you this data because this is the work that the department's going to be honing in on this year to get that right.
Gotcha. So the left is the outcomes, as you show.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. Thanks.
Okay. I think my, I hope my question's relatively quick, and then I'll circle back to you, Director Hampson. If we could flip back to the other one on the special education, the counts of students identified for intensive service pathway. The questions that were raised, I think by Director Rankin and Director Rivera Smith around current services and support is also something that's really fresh on my mind. Identifying students for a certain pathway, there's, there's two sides to this coin. One is, you know, potentially pigeonholing a student into a pathway that's inappropriate and isn't going to be the right level of service for them. But the flip side of that is actually having equitable access to the appropriate level of service. So the services that I can think of, kind of off the top of my head, are, you know, specific accommodations, like, you know, an IA doing a check-in daily with that student, or, you know, specialized assignments sheets, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering whether or not we actually have data around that and the focus on, are we appropriately providing the right services to students? That's the question I'm, I'm not, I kind of feel like there's a disconnect between this metric of identifying students for intensive service pathway and whether or not it's, are they, are more students that need appropriate special education services to meet FAP, are they getting those services? And I don't know that this metric actually gets to that. So I'm, and maybe that gets to Director Rankin's question. Ms. Pedrosa, can you, I hope I'm being somewhat clear enough. Do you understand what I'm trying to get at?
I think so. So let me, let me, let me, so, so the one is, when you're talking about, you're talking about two different things. So what I'm, this slide that I'm presenting here is talking about, because we, we have talked about for many, many years, and it started with the conversation, and I want to bring us back to the CCIS, you know, slide, that you, that we had, we had a problem, right? An over-identification of African-American students identified in disciplinary actions, right? And specifically, we had over African-American students with IEPs that were being disciplined at a higher rate than other students. So that's like the problem of practice that we were dealing with, right? So the slide in front of you, in terms of special education, which I will flip to the next slide, please, which is the special education one, this is also addressing the problem of practice. So we have, we have our intensive service pathways, right? So these are our most restrictive environments, including SEL. So many students who get disciplined also end up in SEL services. So I'm just going to use that as an example. And our SEL classrooms, if you look at that, have a higher, higher, higher number of African-American students in those pathways. That's one example, right? And those are very restrictive environments. However, if you, we look at access programming, that actually has a trend of more, the other students, our white students, actually trending higher into those access programs, and most of those students are serving, getting served in general education classrooms. So this data is to sort of analyze all of that problem of practice that we have around a race and also service pathways, right? So if we know that our goals are to have students access more general education curriculum, then we really have to not only look at how we're identifying students, which in some service pathways can be attributed to race, to bias of all these things, but the other thing is to look at how are we actually serving students in those pathways? So there's, it's a two-pronged problem, you're right, and it's something that we have to dig deeper on. And so I wanted to sort of show you the problem of practice that we're digging into, because it's something that's, just like CCIS, that's been a three, more than three years of work to get to the place that we are. This is work that we're starting. I wanted to be, bring you the data in front of you, and I want to share with you, as we move or through our progress, some of the work that we're doing to sort of attack, sort of really work on both, both problems. It's twofold.
No, I, that helps explain a bit more. I think my comment to, feedback to the CNI committee as this work progresses, is that the goal is to ensure that the appropriate least restrictive environment is provided, and that it's not disproportionately restrictive. And so I hear that that's what you're trying to pay attention into and dig into the why of why we may have more students being focused into a restrictive environment. I'd like to add the thought that, question of why is that environment restrictive, and whether or not it's actually restorative, appropriate services for students, and whether or not it's anti-biased and culturally responsive. I think, like, digging into whether or not the programs themselves are supportive and appropriate. So thank you very much for kind of clarifying that. Director Hampson?
Thank you. No, I was just going to say, I appreciate seeing the desegregation of Asian-American, and specifically here, Southeast Asian. So I just wanted to, and I apologize if I, if you mentioned that earlier and I missed it. I did take a call earlier in your, in your slides, Dr. Pedrosa. So I assume that I can take a standard definition for that, unless you tell me otherwise, and then, you know, I don't, can you just tell me a little bit more about how we're collecting, tracking, how representative that data is?
Yes. I mean, regarding the, can you just ask your question, the not Southeast Asian category?
Well, yeah, I mean, both. You know, I was just trying to, like, okay, thinking in my head that I know what Southeast Asian is, and then I'm like, well, wait, does that include the Philippines or not? So, yeah, if you could elaborate on that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, okay, yes. And I, and I don't have all of my notes in front of me, to be honest, but I will know that not, not Southeast Asian comprises of, you know, like, our Chinese students, our Japanese students. And so, and then our Southeast Asian students are the ones like Cambodia and Laos, our students that actually come from those Southeast regions, the ones that we have, we've been working with a lot in the last several years. I don't, I don't have an exhaustive list, but I can actually put that in here. But I just, we wanted to make sure that we had that separate, because we wanted people to note that, that we're looking at it differently. Especially because it comes up a lot. We talk about students from, further from educational justice. As you notice, if Southeast Asian students are the only Asian students that are actually highlighted in this group, but that's why we wanted to make the distinction. But I don't have all the subcategories and how they're distinctive, but I can get that for you.
And are we, are those subcategories consistently represented? I'm just, other than going in and trying to fill out an enrollment form?
Yeah. It's listed. It is listed. It's all the same information that we're using, so the.
It's on there.
Yeah, it's on there. It's the same. So I'll just make sure we get it for you, so you guys know exactly how it's, how it's, how each one is coded. So I'll make sure that we get that information to you. But it's through the enrollment planning system. It's the way we all identify our data. I just wanted to make sure I really had it spelled out for you, how we're looking at this data.
And then, and does that, but it probably doesn't go down to the level of detail of, like, Hmong communities?
You know, I, like I said, I, I think, I do, I do remember seeing Hmong communities as part of the Southeast Asian communities.
Okay, all right. Well, yeah.
But I don't know how further, there's so many cultures, and there's, you know, having been the former principal Seattle World School, like, over 130 communities.
But it's really, it's important stuff, and I appreciate.
It is important. And we'll, and we'll get it for you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Then we have one more section before we do the op scorecard around graduation and CCR, Diane. And given the.
Time.
But given the agenda and the time, it looks like we're going to be pushing into the board bowls, or.
Director Mack, I would encourage us to, I would encourage us to try to get done as close to six as we can.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the amount of content presented and the number of breaks for discussion made that really difficult. So what is your suggestion at this point? Should we continue through with the graduation and CCR and the op scorecard? Or do we want to just skip to op scorecard? Because I don't, I mean, if we have 10 minutes left, each of these sections have been taking about 20 minutes. So we have somewhere around 20 to 30 minutes left. Would you have a suggestion, President DeWolff?
If we could be done by 15 after six, that would be probably okay. We could eat into some of the time of the next session and maybe just move to the dashboard.
If what I could, yeah, what I'll suggest then is that if we maybe go through the graduation and CCR slides and the op scorecard briefly, and then take questions at that time on all that content. Otherwise, we're definitely not going to get there. Is that, is that okay with people? Hearing no objections, Diane. And thank you, President DeWolff, for the support.
Thank you, Director Mack. I think I can go through this section pretty quickly. We'll be talking about graduation, college and career readiness, and college enrollment. So as you see from this very first slide, you'll see that the percentage of ninth-grade students earning six or more credits increased from 1819 to 1920 for both our African-American males and our students of color further from educational justice. The graduation rate also increased by 4.2 percentage points for students of color further from educational justice, and 2 percentage points for African-American males. So that's a really good news. We're pleased with the increase. Helping our Seattle Public Schools students earn six credits has been a focus for a number of years in the district, and so we're making progress, and that's obvious from this slide. But at the same time, we're focused on our future classes, now that students need to meet 24 credits, and we have House Bill 1599 graduation pathways. So we're actively supporting schools and helping students meet, students meet those two challenging goals, and we're looking at the state at potential additional flexibility as they did in this past year. Next slide. Now we go into the college and career readiness slide. And in this slide, again, you'll see that students of color further from educational justice successfully completed advanced coursework, and it remained, but it remained stable from 1819 to 1920, and it decreased by 6.5% for African-American males. This is obviously an area where we need to make progress. We've seen that these numbers are relatively flat for students of color further from educational justice over the past two years. And we do believe that there's some negative effects of COVID on testing, and thus these numbers. As you can see on the, the right-hand side, the college and career readiness and ELA assessment, you will see that the numbers that we count in there include the Smarter Balanced Assessment, SAT and ACT. And you'll recall, we did not have the Smarter Balanced this year. So that could account for some of that drop. We also are concerned about the drop of our students of color in advanced coursework. And actually, we're digging into this because it doesn't match our understanding of the efforts of our high schools to expand AP, IB, and college and high school. So we're working with our schools to better understand why this drop may have happened. We have some hypotheses, early hypotheses, that say that some students may have moved from IB or AB to the bridge to college to ensure that they met the House Bill 1599 pathway. So we're still digging into it, but we're really excited. And if you were listening in last night at the SSCNI committee meeting, or you've read the packet, you'll know that we're bringing forth a bar for equal opportunity schools, and their efforts will be in exactly this area, getting students further from educational justice, and their definition is expanded a little bit beyond that, but to get students into these advanced coursework. So we're excited to talk about that next week. Next slide. In this slide, we talk about the students completing college and career readiness in our math. You'll see that we increased by 3% for African-American males and by 5.4% for students of color further from educational justice, but it still remains very low. We are not proud of this particular slide. For math, things are a little bit more encouraging, but they're still concerning. Again, we believe the effect of COVID on testing had something to do with this, because you have that same SBA in the, the right or the left hand graph there that may have some of that. And then again, our, our hopefulness in this area is that our equal opportunity schools, or as we reported, as EOS, will help us with this. Next slide. And this is our last slide in this particular discussion, and it's about college enrollment. As you can see, first-year college enrollment for the class of 2019 decreased by 2.6% for African-American males, but it increased by 1.9% for students of color further from educational justice. In enrollment in Seattle Promise increased from 399 students for the class of 2019 to 696 students for this current class of 2020, and that includes 455 students of color. So the percentage of students from the class of 2017 who did not enroll in remedial classwork increased substantially for both groups. And that completes my, my, my comments. And I talked really fast.
You did, and great. In the interest of time, if we could go ahead and, if that's okay, to move on to the presentation on the operations data dashboard, and then we'll take questions at the end of that. I'm not sure who's starting on this one.
I believe that would be me. This is Clover Cod, Chief Human Resource Officer. We're not doing questions on Diane's last part. We're going to go straight to this, complete this, and then do questions. Is that correct, Director Mack?
Yes, on all of it, just in the interest of time.
Okay, no worries. All right. So I think it's important, as you look at this human resources data point, that four years ago, when we set out to redo all of our operational processes and our strategic efforts, everything was aimed, everything we did was aimed at making sure there was a classroom, a teacher in the classroom on the very first day of school. In the 1617 school year, 87% of our classrooms were filled with a teacher on the first day of school, but that represented over 100 openings. And that was the norm. And those vacancies were disproportionately, they impacted our Title I schools. So whereas our Title I schools make up 30% of our schools, 41% of the openings were in our Title I schools. Today, you'll see that that has now increased to 99.2% of our classrooms are filled on the first day, and that represents just under 30 positions. And we have completely reversed the disproportionate impact on Title I schools. So now, Title I openings are actually underrepresented in these numbers and first-day openings. And I am finished with mine. Moving on to nutrition services.
I believe that may be Mr. Podesta.
Yes. Thank you, Director Mack and Dr. Cod. Some of these measures you've seen before, and some have been rethought for the 1920 school year. I think we've often reported lunch participation rates, which we measure as to, as we are trying to improve the menu offering and make food in Seattle Public Schools more welcoming and attractive. We are tracking, again, participation rates for lunch in the 1920 school year. While we were serving meals in buildings, it was 28%, which is a slight increase over the year before. The transportation, I'll just go ahead through the three operation division measures and then turn it over to Dr. Pedrosa. For transportation, we've long talked, which. For transportation, we've long talked, which was our focus goal in the strategic plan this year. We've long had many discussions about timely service of school bus service, and we actually changed the measure this year because the district had been really relying on the operations, the Transportation Operations Center reporting numbers of routes that were reported late and not really using the increasing technology that we had on our buses and the Zoner system to actually track on-time performance regardless of whether the bus had been, the route had been reported late. So given this new metric and a 10-minute window, overall, for the school year while we had yellow bus transportation and service, we were, achieved a 96% on-time rate, which means 96% of the 1,400 bus routes reached their school destination within a 10-minute window of arriving at school. And, and again, we're using different numbers to get more precise measurements. This does represent a significant increase in improvement over the years before, but it's a little bit apples and oranges how we're counting. Capital planning and execution is also a new measure, but we were able, since we didn't have the data, we were able to retrofit it to prior years. Previously, the ops data dashboard had just counted the number of projects that were closed in a year and how many were on time and on budget. We've migrated that to just focusing on budget and the percent of budget variance compared to the actual spend. There have been no significant overages, negative budget variances in the past three years. So what this specifically measures for the 1920 school year is of the $104 million of projects closed out in that year, what was the spending relative to that? And again, they all came in on budget, and I believe Dr. Petrosa, or perhaps Ashley Davis, is going to talk about enrollment planning, so I'll turn it over to them.
Hi, it's, it's me, Constance Petrosa, and I'm here for Ashley tonight, just to share a little bit. And as you can see, the projection rate is 98.7% from the enrollment planning department. They have been pretty steady in terms of their overall accuracy in predicting enrollment annually, which, as you know, has huge budget implications for staffing and so forth. And I will just note that this year, that the shift, for the first time in a long time, went down. And that is in alignment with state and the national trends related to closures. And we've, we've submitted the numbers of enrollment numbers related to specifically the trends in high school and kindergarten. And with the noted that kindergarten had over 600 students. We were under-enrolled over 600 students in kindergarten for this year. And with that, I will pass that information on to the next person.
That's back to me.
That's back to you, yep.
For facility work orders, of the roughly 5,000 responsive work orders that come to facilities, typically around 10% are emergency work orders that either need immediate attention or represent a life safety issue. And 100% of those were completed on time, usually within a 24-hour need date. And I will turn it over to Chief Financial Officer Bergy.
Thank you. Good evening. So the first one I have is how many dollars we're spending on direct services to schools. We're up slightly at 0.3%. That is in line with our expectation. Generally, we believe this is related to increases in compensation. And if you want more information about what direct services to schools mean, for 1920, that's on page eight of the budget book and page seven of the current year budget book. So with that, I will pass it back to Chief Podesta.
Yes, and at the start of schools, schools are asked to revise their emergency management plan to make sure the contact information, if there's staffing changes or any other program changes, are reflected and file a revised plan with the Safety and Security Department. And we track those through the month of September. And all schools got a completed plan that had been reviewed by us this year by the deadline at the end of September, which represents a bit of an improvement in terms of all getting done and all getting done earlier. And I think, I assume this goes back.
Back to me. Thank you. So first call resolution rate says we're able to help a person resolve their issue without referring them elsewhere. And so from March to August, we were in COVID pandemic. Our numbers were shooting up. So while we are down 2.1%, we were actually pleasantly surprised that it was only down by that amount, amount. It was a lot of higher call volume with a lot different issues than we had been dealing with in the past. So we were actually pleasantly surprised with that variance. With that, I would conclude my remarks, and I'm not sure who I'm passing it to.
That is me. This is Sherri Cox, Chief of Staff. And the last two pieces of data that I want to share with you are the school leader communications overall satisfaction, and this is the overall percentage of positive school leader responses to customer survey questions about central office communications. And then the second piece of data there is the school leader satisfaction, and that is the overall percentage of positive school leader responses to customer survey questions about central office department, customer service, and management of operations. And those divisions include the business, finance, and technology, coordinated school help, equity partnerships and engagement, human resources, operations, student supports, and then the teaching and learning departments. And if you remember, we had agreed that we would not do customer satisfaction surveys for our students and our families due to the COVID closure. And that concludes everything from staff, Director Mac.
Okay, great. Then directors, in the interest of time, I think this is the last opportunity to ask questions and provide comments on both the graduation and CCR information, as well as the entire operations data dashboard. And if it's okay, I'll go ahead and go backwards and start with Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. You know, I think in, I don't really have anything, but no pressing questions that seem to take a time, but I know we're already late. I was saying that I was fooled. I looked at this student satisfaction, family satisfaction, I thought they were 100%. I'm like, whoa, and then I realized that they're not there at all. It's fall 2021, so. But that can be our goal, that's aiming for 100. Otherwise, yeah, this is great. I love all the information. Thank you for, for that, and I will pass for now. Thank you.
Okay, Director Rankin.
I'm fine to pass now, too. Thanks.
Director Hershey.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Director Harris.
Appreciate the information immensely and will continue to beat the drum for next year when we're out of COVID, that our fleet of buses are south of the First Avenue South Bridge, which is a nightmare that I drive every day. And don't hold your breath for those good on time going on, because otherwise our bus drivers will be up at 3:00 AM. They're going to be corked there, along with the rest of the West Seattle folks. Thank you.
Okay, Director Hampson.
No questions. Thank you.
Director DeWolff.
None here. Thank you.
Okay, then it gets to me. Last questions and comments. I'm first curious about whether or not we will have the opportunity to revise these metrics and maybe consider other metrics that may be more aligned to certain goals? Or is this in perpetuity, the way that these metrics are laid out at this point?
Director Mac, this is Chief of Staff Sherri Cox. And if you remember, these were the metrics that are in alignment with our strategic plan that the board approved. I think it was in July, I'm not sure exactly, but recently around Superintendent Juno's evaluation. If you remember, realigning the operations and the district scorecard was part of her 2019, 2020 evaluation process, and these were the agreed-upon forms.
Okay, great.
It's not to say that each team isn't collecting other data points. And I believe we agreed that we would share out those other data points at various points, for example, during the sessions around Superintendent Juno's 2020, 21 evaluation. There is an overall goal of overall operations where other data points could be shared with the board.
Okay, then I would provide some comment at this point about a couple of the metrics that I think are not capturing some information that we need to be tracking more transparently. And one of those is around facilities and the maintenance of our buildings. I think we've lost that metric being kind of high level as to whether or not we are appropriately maintaining our buildings. And the other is aligned with the safety and security metric. Emergency management is incredibly important. And given a lot of the incidents of the last year, I think our students' individual safety in our buildings and the incidence of, of issues or accidents and having some more transparent reporting out of incidents of, that are unsafe incidents or accidents or other issues would be more helpful to identifying whether or not our buildings are safe and secure, not just the emergency management. So I'd like to encourage that in that next conversation, data is brought forward around student safety in some form or another. And I, I, I'm sure that'll have other conversation with the rest of the board and staff going forward. And with that.
Director Mac, Director Mac, can I just give a huge shout out to our teams who put this data together for us? Eric Anderson and his research and evaluation team, and then our business intelligence team that's led by Anna Cruz. And I believe every one of those folks is on the line, so I just want to make sure we acknowledge the hard work that went into preparing these reports.
Absolutely, and thank you for bringing that forward. I deeply appreciate it. And so with that, Director DeWolff, it looks like we may have been successful at ending before 6:15. Would you like to allow us to take a couple-minute break and come back at?
Yeah, why don't folks come back at 6:15? Yes, that'd be great.
All right. And, and Ms. Cox, thank you for raising those thanks, and additionally, thanks to all the staff for all the work that's been just.
We will now move back into the second work session tonight on the 2020 Board Evaluations and the 2021 Board Goals. Ms. Wilson Jones has put the work session PowerPoint on the screen for those of you who are able to follow. And I want to just start by first sharing my gratitude for Ms. Wilson Jones, as well as Director Rivera Smith and Director Hampson on the work around our board goals, and just thank you for the behind-the-scenes work to make this possible. Okay, next slide, Ms. Wilson Jones. Okay, so I'll, I'll tag Director Rivera Smith in here momentarily, but wanted to go through our agenda for this session. We will start by reviewing the board policies related to goal setting and self-evaluation. Next, we will review the process for the development of the 2020 Board Goals. We will then review those 2020 Board Goals. After that, we'll gather any more feedback on implementation of the board goals, as you can maybe remember, or if you're not, I'll remind folks. Tonight's conversation will require an additional step for Director Rivera Smith and I to take any final feedback and incorporate it into the document, because that document needs to be done by tomorrow for the 2020 Board Goals, because we will be voting on that, or excuse me, is that our agenda next week? Not voting on, but it needs to be posted for next week's agenda. And after that, we'll do next steps for finalization of this evaluation, and then talk about 2021 Board Goals. Next slide, please. Mr. Director Rivera Smith, do you want to go over the policies that we are connected to in this process?
Sure, thank you. So the process is all dictated by board policy. 1810, as you can see here on the slide, annual goals and objectives. The board formulated our goals and objectives, and those were laid out. I think we did them, I had a timeline earlier. It's, we did them back starting in December, at the board retreat. Those were put together by Director Hampson and formulated into what we approved in March, I believe, which gave us a little less than a year to go through them. But anyways, at the conclusion of the year, we reflected. So this is the end of the time. I've communicated with individual board directors to gather the individual goals portions of that, and Director DeWolff and I met to go over the, sort of the graph that we had that laid out all of our goals for the year to see what had been completed, what had not. And I put together a narrative, which you'll find at the end of this presentation packet. It's at the very end. It's about three pages. And thank you for all the numbers you got back to me with. And thank you for all the numbers you got back to me with their input on those. Next slide.
So just to clarify, the evaluation is enumerated in policy and requires us to do an evaluation at the end. And so now we're on 1820. Correct, Director O'Vera Smith?
So yes, so now that we are at the conclusion of a year, we have done the evaluation of our performance in terms of the general principles and successful board operations and in relation to its annual goals and objectives. Some evaluation has addressed performance in those areas. Again, as you can see at the end of this packet, the results of the self-evaluation will be used in setting goals for the subsequent year, which this year's packet even did carry over one of the goals from 2019 that had not been fulfilled. And we'll get to that one here, too. So as we look at this year's goals and where we stood and where we landed, we can definitely take that into our composing our goals for the following year. There is. Yeah, there is a beautiful timeline that Ellie put together for us, thank you. We had the board retreat, we developed our goals there. And I think half of us were fresh on the board. So that was quite the adventure putting that together at the retreat. We, the executive committee developed the proposed goals. And there was additional feedback given, we approved them, like I said, in March. And then through March to present, we worked on those goals. But of course, you know, this has been a very unexpected March through November, clearly with pandemic and school closures and everything else that we've been had on our plates. You'll see as we go through the narrative which parts were not completed and which parts we were able to put our attentions towards. And now, in this process, it's been October, November, Director DeWolff and I have been getting together to complete the draft and work on this presentation here. And today, like Director DeWolff mentioned, we are evaluating, we're going to go through the evaluation. We can all give our own input on to how we feel about our progress. And we can move on to the next portion. We'll be, well, we'll complete the narrative with input gathered tonight. I guess tomorrow again, like you said, and we'll get that posted so it can be presented at an upcoming board meeting. It's not going to be acted on, there's no vote, but it is just presented in a regular board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next slide. Okay, so we're going to quickly go through and we'll just, we'll switch off Director O'Vera Smith. We can, I'll do one and three if you can do two and four. So just to kind of talk about the four bucket areas of our 2020 Board Goals in alignment with our strategic plan. We wanted to pursue a pro-black agenda and assertively engage in pro-black relationship building, dialogue and normalization of the centering of black voices in Seattle Public Schools, model anti-racism via policy and decolonization of our leadership practice. I think this is probably not only something we want to think about in the immediate, but it's certainly something that is likely more of a long-term practice in our goals. And so hope to see that again. The other part of this bucket was to participate in trainings pertaining to ethnic studies since time immemorial and anti-racism and policymaking. And I want to just elevate one thing that Director O'Vera Smith said. One of the goals in our 2020 Board Goals, if you remember, was a social event with staff and board. Obviously, with pandemic, that didn't happen. So some of these goals, like this participate in trainings, we're hoping can be multi-year. And since we have room in our 2020 Board Goals, there's obviously opportunity for ethnic studies pedagogy, for example. Director O'Vera Smith, I'll let you take slide number two, or next section, excuse me.
Of course, community engagement. This was definitely, I love how everything of our board is very attuned to being centering community in our decision-making. And we wanted to make that a priority this year in our goals. Part of that was to create some sort of system that we could use to collect and analyze our incoming community communications, to basically track unique interactions, relationships. This was sort of, I think, on a higher level than our one-on-one meetings with constituents. This was more looking at the organizations we were speaking to and who we were going to, you know, trying to broaden our scope, especially to include communities of color and make sure that we were using that to build upon our work. So that part of the, that was part one. The second part was to hold one meeting to engage with the dual language and multilingual families. We did that via a work session right after the school closure for the DLI, or sorry, not DLI, the EL. Yeah, sorry, yeah, my acronyms all screwed up. We had the EL department, and we'll talk more about that in the narrative. But yeah, those were the two pinpoints for that community engagement piece.
Thank you. Okay, next slide, number three is continuous improvement. And this focused on four areas. Executive committee review of all committee work plans to ensure alignment with strategic plan and calendaring. The next was each committee chair in collaboration with their board directors on committee and appropriate staff will participate in one racial equity analysis toolkit completion for a bar. The next one was board will review and revise the bar meeting, retreat, work sessions, committee and other process functions as appropriate to ensure maximum alignment to strategic plan and use racial equity analysis tool. And I say as appropriate because some of these, as when we did verbal reviews in our committees, didn't necessarily rise to the level of needing to address that function just yet. And then the last one was the board will develop criteria for work sessions. And then next one's you, Director O'Vera Smith.
It is, the board staff relations. The board, as Director DeWolff mentioned, we, part of that goal was to have a staff social, because we thought that would be an awesome opportunity to see each other outside of the John Stanford Center. Unfortunately, again, we finalized these in March, and that was about when COVID hit. So we did not get a chance to have that social. I hope that we can still look towards that in the future, once we are able to be in person again. Or maybe we can get really creative and do something online, you never know. Second part of that was to review, revise, clarify and develop where necessary the board superintendent slash board staff communications policy and procedures, which are in Board Policy 1620 and Board Procedure 1620. That was a carryover from 2019. My district predecessor, Director Rick Burke, had been working with Superintendent Juno and staff on that. Had made a lot of progress, we were trying to finish it up this year. Unfortunately, that one did not again get finished up. A lot due to just the pandemic, a lot of unexpected work that came across everyone's plate here. So that is one that we probably want to keep looking at for next year again as we go forward.
And so I think if one thing is being elevated from our discussion between Director O'Vera Smith and I, some of our goals, not some, but I believe our board goals were fairly ambitious, as well as our committee and policy calendars. We were very ambitious in January when we thought we had a year full of the same systems and processes to do the work. So I think some of these have certainly been affected by COVID, much like the talent show or sports event, although I was rooting for the talent show. And so I think we can move into now talking about the next steps, and then we would love to get some feedback on the actual narrative. And again, this, what we talk about tonight will capture and we will quickly incorporate that so we can get this posted in time tomorrow for next Wednesday's board meeting, where it needs to be posted for the public. So today's work session will be incorporating any final feedback on the self-evaluation narrative. Between tonight sometime and tomorrow, Director O'Vera Smith and I will quickly get on the phone and kind of work to revise and polish up the document. As of now, as we think moving forward, because this is obviously a look back in the development of the 2021 Board Goals, we've already started the discussion between Director Hampson and myself. I've been tasked with supporting Director Hampson as the lead on this, so doing, you know, all of the manual labor, if you will, around it. So, you know, gathering input from directors, putting it on a document, all that. We are beginning the discussion of that tonight. And on the fifth, at our board retreat, we will have a larger chunk of time to discuss further ideas, help refine, help iterate. And then that will go to the December 9th executive committee for finalization to send up to the board. Hopefully, we can introduce that to December 16th and vote on that on the 13th of January. That's in a very ambitious timeline, so we will try to stick to it. Next slide, please. I think this puts us to the actual document, the actual narrative. So if folks have that themselves, that is helpful. Ms. Wilson Jones, if you could put it up, I don't necessarily know that we all need to look at it and use that one in case we can use it at our own devices. But Director O'Vera Smith, I'm wondering in maybe five-ish minutes, if you could just walk us through the narrative? And we'll take feedback from directors and then we can do one final sweep and then move to talking about 2021. So over to you, Director O'Vera Smith.
Of course, thank you. So as we went through earlier, the goal one was the alignment with the strategic plan. We were centering that a lot around developing our pro-black agenda and modeling anti-racism, which was to be achieved through our trainings that we hope to attend, which we did. We had many of us, I believe, if not all of us, attended the COSBAC, Coalition of Schools Educating Boys of Color trainings. There were several of those, and they still are continuing with those. So this, again, we don't need to stop any of these goals, working towards them. We still have, whether or not it's a board goal, I think we are all invested in attending more anti-racism trainings. These also, this work also included the books you read, which we went over at one of our board retreats, We Dare Say Love, and You Failed Us, Students of Color Talk Seattle Schools. We also, we spoke about, like, again, we shared on our readings at that board retreat. The next page there was also, part of that was also in developing our individual goals, which I've notated some here in the document for people I heard back from. Director Rankin centers in today, thank you for that. I will incorporate that into the final document, thanks Liza. And those, I just wanted to be able to give at least one example, if I could. I know you might have a wonderful person, and that's great. If anybody wanted to, I would invite maybe Directors, so I guess Director, well, Director Rankin and Director Hersi, if you want to share on those, since you did not get a chance to be represented in this document, you're welcome to. We also, so again, we are going to be finishing up this document. So if you don't want to share anything, that's fine, maybe you could email me sometime tonight or in the morning. That would be wonderful.
Director O'Vera Smith? I don't, I don't, if we were sent a revised version of this document, I don't, I haven't seen it.
Um, I sent, like I said, about maybe a week ago, just to get that last piece in.
Oh, no, I'm just saying this version of it, we don't, we don't have, I don't know if.
No, you probably don't think, because, yeah, I sent it out, again, I sent it out, I guess.
No, I'm just letting Director DeWolff know that we, so there's the prior one.
You have it now in this document.
Just to look at.
Yeah, you guys put it now in the board materials for tonight, but you did not have it previously, not this version, you're correct. But anyways, as we're going on, that.
Director Hampson, something that we need to see here or to call out here?
No, you just suggested that we pull it up, and I was looking for it on my computer. And I know, I just have the older one. So if that's the one you're referencing, I'll pull that up, I just didn't.
Yeah, you can pull it up on today's materials. Yeah, you would pull it up on tonight's link of materials, there you go. Again, so community engagement, again, that part of this was Director DeWolff had committed to creating a template that we could use for post-engagement to document our communications and then.
Still on one, Director O'Vera Smith, I think we're still on one here, just to finish that one up.
Okay, I was just trying to.
The goal is near completion.
Yes, goal near completion, because we, again, because as Director DeWolff mentioned, we were not able to do some of the trainings we'd hoped to do. It was a very busy year, not just for us, but for all districts. So many trainings were at capacity, we were not able to get into some of the ones that we wanted to. So that one, that's really the biggest reason, that one's near completion and not completed. We will continue, though, to seek out those trainings and get those completed in the near future, hopefully. Thank you. So now, yeah, then goal two, community engagement, as I said, part of that was to create that template. I believe Director DeWolff is probably very near completing that. And so we can look for that soon. Directors, also, we held the meeting with our dual and multilingual families. That meeting was held on April 1st of 2020. It was, in fact, our first ever remotely held work session. So that was the beginning of what we've now gotten more accustomed to doing here. But we were joined by our director of English learners, Michelle Ora, who opened our eyes to a lot of the works of her department and the families' needs. And I think we are continuing to seek out those communities in our community engagements. This goal is on track to be completed. Again, this is, we're sort of just, I think, waiting on that final template from Director DeWolff. But I feel confident that will happen.
Yes, Director O'Vera Smith, I'll have that to the executive committee on the 9th of December.
Awesome, thank you. Goal three was the continuous improvement. This is mostly centered on operational. So a lot of this was work done by the executive committee, with task of reviewing all committee work plans, which they have been now doing. Each committee chair, in collaboration with their committee's board directors and appropriate staff, participated in one racial equity analysis toolkit completion. We believe this was completed, but if any chairs have not done that, let us know. Because I know the executive committee did, and I am not the chair of any other, I'm not a chair of anyone, but I don't know, sure, if the other committees completed that. The board reviewed and considered changes as new to the board action reports, meeting format, retreat, work sessions. A lot of things were covered, and I believe these were all covered this year. Again, I welcome any feedback that questions that or maybe says there was some work still to be completed there. Goal four, we're going into board staff relations again. I was the director designated to work with the superintendent and our members to look through 1620. I utilized Director Brooks, or then Director Burke's notes from last year. He, again, had done a lot of work on it. I think things changed, because obviously, when he did it, it was a different board. And it was, you know, four different people were on it. And so I think this is the kind of work that does need to be done in collaboration with board members directly. So I do have it as a goal to still reach out directly more with you. I've spoken to a few of you on these topics, on these policies and procedures, but definitely have not finished work. So I'm, I'm sorry, Superintendent Juno is just, you know, looking for our direction in that and is ready to, you know, work with us and however we want to go forward with those policies and procedures. And then, of course, the social events, which I know everybody was pushing for karaoke. I think we could maybe do it online, I don't think it's out of the question. But we'll see what we can get done there, this goal has not been completed. We'll keep working on it. Was there any thing, people, any board members wanted to make comments or questions on this?
And I'll go through directors one by one, and I just want to elevate that today is November 12th. So this does go through 2020. So part of our discussion today can forecast for the December meeting with the hope that some of these will be completed. I don't think we can necessarily get a ton of any things that haven't been completed done by then, but some things may change that we'll need to revise at that meeting at that time. But as of today, with the document that was so graciously and helpfully created by Director O'Vera Smith, I'm going to just go through directors alphabetically to gather any final feedback, comments or anything. And Director O'Vera Smith, I'll just encourage you to kind of capture that somewhere. And then when we do our call tomorrow, we can update on that.
Open this all up, whatever people say, I got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll start with Director Hampson.
I don't have any additional feedback, I'd provided a couple of comments earlier. And so I think that was, otherwise, I think it makes sense. We were definitely ambitious, and I think we still had hopes that maybe we could pull something together, even with a remote version of actually coming together socially. But, you know, it's been a bit of a busy year, so I feel pretty good about. There are things about the work that we, the goals that we set for ourselves, like with the COSBAC session, that each of those individual pieces that we did over time, I felt ended up being incredibly valuable. And so even though it wasn't in the same format as we had predicted, definitely good things would have come out of us all being together at the COSBAC conference. And I hope that we will be able to do that. I also think that we've managed to have multiple sessions over many, many weeks and have really appreciated it and appreciate staff's facilitation and making sure that we made that happen as well. So thanks for putting this. So um, thanks for putting this together and um, yeah, I don't have anything further to, to say about it.
Thank you. Director Hersi.
This is great work, especially in the middle of a pandemic and uh, appreciate my colleagues and uh, lift and staff's assistance with the lift. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hersi.
Yeah, I'll just echo. I really appreciate the work that's gone into this. Uh, Director Vera Smith, apologies. Given the school year, I have been abnormally busy in comparison to a few months ago. So if you could just send me the most recent document, I would be more than happy to provide uh, some comments in the next couple of days here.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Hersi, the only thing is, is um, we need to post something tomorrow, but if, if over the weekend, Direct, uh, Ms. Wilson Jones, if there's anything that Director Hersi sees, can we redline anything on Monday and Tuesday?
Yes, we could certainly repost um, on Tuesday when we do our next posting.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, so Director Mack.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, I echo my uh, gratitude for all the folks that took the time to do all of this work, uh, putting this document together. And um, that in and of itself is a lift. So thank you um, for that. And uh, I, I do feel as if our, our, um, our goals were, you know, it's, it's good to set high goals, I think. But I do want to, I do want to see about being, um, I don't know, maybe, maybe more pointed and strategic and, and reasonable in our expectation of ourselves. And in, Director DeWolff, are we also talking about the next year's goals right now or just this document?
Um, we will get to that momentarily.
Okay, so then I'll hold my thoughts on that. So I just, yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate all of this. I think it's an accurate reflection. And um, uh, we can move on to the next.
Okay, okay, thank you. Director Rankin.
Thanks. Um, no, I, I don't really have anything to add. Just thanks to um, Director Vera Smith and President DeWolff for taking the time to uh, put this together and um, connect with us all about it. And um, yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you. And while we, both Director Vera Smith and I have the mic, just want to make sure, Director Vera Smith, do you have any thing that you want to add or name here now? Because I have just a s- small couple of things.
I think while, and doing, putting this narrative together, I realized, and as I communicated with board members, I realized that a lot of people, you know, kind of lost sight of this document because, or lost sight of our goals, because it's been, you know, it is what it is. Our work is ongoing. So I'm wondering if maybe there can be, going forward, like next year's, there could be check-ins um, about regards to goals, even if it's just to update the board, say, hey, board, here's where we are right now. Don't forget about your individual goals, because this one did have individual goals. I don't know if most board goals for a year do have individuals like that, that we develop on our own and carry out on our own. But, you know, I think just reminding our board about that this is, you know, a document that lasts the whole year. Just so it's not like we approve it and then never hear about it again until the end, because then sometimes we don't realize that, hey, we're doing this work, um, or that we're not doing this work. So um, just some sort of check-ins like that, I think might be helpful.
And just for clarity, we do get a board goals check-in um, from Ms. Wilson Jones during exec, but it's certainly not um, board-wide.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Good to think about ideas, for sure.
Thank you. But yeah, and again, I appreciate everybody uh, who gave me feedback on this. That was really helpful, everybody from finding typos to giving opinions. It was, it was good to just, you know, have this um, document that kind of binds us in our work. So I really appreciate it.
And the only thing I would add is I think that while this is great, it does, especially in alignment of strategic plan, I am curious if we can elevate the work that we did with Erin Jones around this as well, even if it's just a sentence or two in goal one section, just to highlight, um, probably in the fourth paragraph where it starts with, wait. Anyway, I think it would be in goal one, we would want to maybe think about something with Erin Jones kind of coming and helping facilitate and um, kind of centralize our conversations around anti-racism would be my only small suggestion. And we can work on that offline, um, but that would be one thing I think we, we could add there.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, if directors have no other comments or questions on the 2021 board goal narrative look back, uh, I wanted to um, move us into the next section, which is just starting to formulate ideas for the 2021 board goals. Given you've just looked at the 2020 board goals narrative and our self-evaluation, you getting some ideas of where we've been, where we still need to go, uh, things we need to double down on. So I would love to just go around and, and I don't necessarily want you to be too exhaustive or stressed about this today, because we will come back in December. So my suggestion would be throw as many ideas as you have on your heart and on your minds out for the 2021 goals. And then when we come back on the 5th of our December board retreat, we can kind of refine and, and, and narrow down um, into, I think, maybe more realistic and achievable goals. Um, not to say we shouldn't be ambitious, but um, I think we were fairly ambitious also during a pandemic. And so maybe we aim for fewer things we can excel at. So with that, I'm going to start alphabetically backwards with Director Vera Smith on any thoughts on 2021 board goals. And I, and I will take a note, Director Vera Smith. Director Vera Smith, still have you? Okay, let's start with Director Rankin, because I don't see Director Vera Smith on. She might have gotten booted.
Um, the first thing that comes to mind, and tell me if, uh, I mean, if this even is, is kind of where, where this should go. I would love for us to have as a board goal, um, to come up with process or preference for how we communicate with each other. Obviously within the bounds of OPMA, uh, but just, you know, I think we've all developed our, our own ways of CCing, when we think we need to CC and including who we think needs to be included, but I don't think we've ever really out, outlined it for ourselves or each other. And especially in a remote setting, uh, I think it would be helpful if we had um, kind of some common expectations around that.
And while you're thinking about that, Director Rankin, Director Vera Smith is back on, and I know she was working on 1620. Does it sound like it's part of 1620 or is it something different?
I think that's a little, well, I think, I think what, I caught Director Rankin's, and I'm sorry about that. I, I dropped off there for a second. I think that part of what she's talking about is definitely work that needs to be accomplished to develop an effective 1620. Because first, we kind of need to understand our, our communications with each other and what our, our um, must-haves are in that and our goals. So um, I think they're definitely related. I don't know if it's, if it's one and the same, but yeah.
I, I think it may be related, but, but it also could have to do more, uh, less with policy and more with just personality. And, and the different, different ways in which we all communicate and the different ways that we think various things are important. I don't know where that would live, because it would change as soon as, as any person on the board changed. But that's, that's just something, uh, I think would be good to think about.
No, I, I do.
Here is the word process. So I think you're right. There will be many directors that, that serve on this board. But we can maybe through that conversation, um, kind of elucidate a potential process that we could kind of help give so that we don't have to recreate this conversation every, every new.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think some of it lives in some places, like the, you know, the board president is sort of the public spokesperson for the, for the board as a whole. But, and, and as like, let's talk and, and things get built out, um, that might also solve some of those things. But I think, yeah, so it, it is procedural and um, it's kind of like, who, who needs to know what, when and how within the context of OPMA and all of that stuff. Because if, you know, if it was just like, if we were just a, a board of, you know, some organization, we could just CC everybody if, you know, there was something that seemed, seemed important. Or um, you know, oh, I, I, we're having this meeting, come if you want, you know, kind of thing. And because we can't do that, I think a lot of times people end up feeling like, well, I didn't know you were doing that. I didn't know you were doing that. And then there's either doubling of efforts or just, just messiness. So um, I think some of it might just be re-emphasizing things that exist already about uh, OPMA and about um, board roles. In terms of like the responsibilities of the president and stuff. But yeah, anyway, I'm, but I don't need to keep going. I think you guys understand what I'm getting at.
We do. Yeah, we do. Thank you. Anything more for goals, ideas, or can I move to Director?
Um, go ahead.
Okay, Director Mack.
Um, actually, what uh, Director Rankin was talking about is something that uh, it's along the lines of the thing that pops into my mind as something that it would be really helpful. I mean, I, I think it's important that we do focus on um, the board superintendent relationship policy and determine whether or not that actually needs any revisions or we need to figure out how to apply it more effectively. I mean, I think that's, that's a question. So I, so I would agree that that needs to maintain, or I would like that to maintain on our board goals going forward, the continued work on that policy. But the corollary between that, that, um, you know, in the context of OPMA, you know, we, we're limited. However, um, there's more things that we could do to, to communicate more effectively with each other, so people knew what was going on. And um, and I think that ha- actually having that conversation about additional processes um, and clarifications, being on the board for three years, um, and, you know, having worked with other individuals, I don't actually see this as a problem of personality as much as a problem of process and uh, way over extension of workload. I mean, we do not have us, we, we have one, uh, one, two people in the board office that support us in some scheduling. And she, uh, Ellie, you do amazing work and, um, and Tina before, and then hopefully we'll have another person coming in. But, but in terms of actually having the support to do all of the work that we as board members could be doing more of, it's um, you know, it's, it's a ridiculously huge job to, to do all the things that we should be doing. And that, that was one of my first, in the, in the first year, I felt really um, disappointed in myself because I um, was not able to keep up with reporting out and sharing the information with my fellow board members and the public around many of the things that were going on in an effective way, because just simply lack of time. There's just not enough time. And so if we had kind of some additional processes for, um, you know, for example, I do think that stuff like having the committee and liaison reports come back to the board meetings, um, maybe even being more specific in like what kind of information we should be sharing with each other. You know, it would be helpful to know and get a heads up if, you know, somebody's having community meetings and, you know, it would be helpful, I think, to um, have more of a process where we appropriately can be communicating with each other, not breaking OPMA, but um, uh, also not feeling we're kind of, you know, don't know what's going on in some cases. And um, my second thought, uh, so I, I do feel like that would be a really good goal, goal is process around board communications with each other. Not just the superintendent and staff, but I think that would be, it would be nice to spend a little time working on that. And um, my other thought about the overarching goals is that um, I, you know, I'd like to see us be as kind of um, not trying to swallow the ocean or boil the ocean, whatever the saying is. Or is it eat an elephant or boil the ocean? I don't know, or I, whatever. I, you know, I, I think that we often, um, in general, people in general have really large appetites for doing the work that we all want to do. And then the reality of what we can actually get done is more narrow. And so um, I don't know if this is a board goal or not, or if it is just in consideration of making our board goals that we um, do some thinking around, um, you know, reasonable expectations of uh, workload and each other, um, to the extent that we can. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hersi.
Hey, thank you. So I've got a couple of notes here. Um, I think in relation to what uh, Director Mack just mentioned, what I would also like to see is how do we not only communicate with one another and assess the workload for our colleagues on the board, but additionally, how can we also do that for staff, right? So what can we do to get a better understanding of the workload, especially of senior staff? And where is there overlap? Where is there opportunity for collaboration? And where is there opportunity for refocusing, right? Because what we, what, what I often see from our perspective as the board is that when we develop a policy, I, I just want to make sure that we have a full understanding of what comes next for that. In terms, uh, and what does, what do those implications mean for staff, right? Like, I, I just want to make sure that we are doing a better job of being not only, not necessarily pragmatic, I don't think is the right word, but just thoughtful around, you know, making sure that when we are discussing policy on our end, that we have an understanding of implications for time management and the ability to deliver um, in an effective way for staff, right? Because I, I think that where we are now is that there are probably a ton of staff, I know for a fact that there are, who want to support us in moving forward as a district in these various ways. But with that ambition also comes um, the, the realities that we all face of workload and then making sure that our communication is clear in terms of priority and timeline. The next thing that I want to um, take a look at is as a board specifically, what can we do to create a culture and policy potentially? Maybe not policy, but maybe policy, you know, as I think about this, the more, what I'm really trying to get at is watching how, over the course of my first year, how various women of color, specifically black, brown and indigenous women have been treated within our system. I really want to take a look as a board about what can we do about our culture in terms of supporting and helping women of color thrive in our system. I think that there's a huge focus, uh, especially out in community around black males, as there should be. But, but we also, at the same time, need to be showing up equally as hard for black women. And we, and we just need to hold that i- in, in ourselves for a moment, because I don't know if we are, I don't know if we're doing the best job of that at any phase of our system. So that would be a conversation that I'm interested in happening, or excuse me, interested in having. Continuing to think about opening up processes, uh, like we are beginning to do for the legislative agenda and participatory budgeting. What other processes exist in our district that we could do a better job of reaching out toward community and really putting them in the driver's seat? I think that we're doing a great job of that, especially during this pandemic, um, with, with a few things. And I think we just want to continue that momentum, because. Um, with, with a few things, and I think we just want to continue that momentum because, there is a lot of excitement. The more that we go out and we, and we tell folks that, you know, we're thinking about participatory budget, well, not just thinking, we're moving forward with participatory budgeting. We're, we're working on opening up these processes and even potentially putting a student on the board, um, in some, in some way, shape or form. And that, that has generated a lot of excitement and a lot of interest around how folks can participate, right? And, and I think if we, I think that there is a silver lining, um, if you could even call it one, from the, uh, technological position that we're in right now. We've got a lot more families, especially those of color, um, who are engaging and really, really holding us accountable in new ways, uh, for their child, for their children's education beyond just a classroom. Also, you know, from the senseless murders of Charlene Lyle, Breonna Taylor, excuse me, Charlene Lyles, Breonna Taylor, George Floyd and countless others. You know, there's this sense of advocacy, especially i- in places like Seattle, that has not waned and is just continuing to grow as people become more engaged in their various systems of local government. So, so what I just want to make sure is that we as an elected body are really thinking very, very, uh, thoughtfully around what other processes can we open up to the public. Um, I've got a couple of more here. Um, I would really like to think about, um, the last thing that I have written down is pacing, right? So understanding at the onset and being able to see, very similarly to the operations data dashboard, what are some of our key initiatives that are happening right now? And what are their pacings? What are their timelines? What are their milestones? All in one place, you know, i- if we could just get, sort of like a s- like a centralized document, maybe it's not a document, maybe I'm thinking too small here. But something where we can have a shared understanding as a system, especially at the top of it, where we can have a shared understanding of where work is, where it is heading and what's, immediately next for a specific piece of work. And maybe that could be broken down by committees, maybe that could be broken down by initiatives. But just something so that, because I think where a lot of our breakdowns and communications are coming from, is that I don't know if we all have a real understanding of what, one another's day to day is like, right? So like, what is on the plate of senior staff? What is on the plate of the superintendent? What is on the plate of the board? And how all of those things, uh, interact together? That mu- again, that is incredibly ambitious, I understand that. But even just having a conversation and getting ideas down on paper about how we could capture that information would be of interest to me. And ultimately, what I think all of this yields is an opportunity just for us to take stock, of where we are in this moment and, and where is it that we're heading next, right? Because this pandemic will end, we will be in some way, shape or form returning to classrooms, somewhere in the next year, hopefully. Can't predict the future, but, as an educator, I hope at some point I'm going to be able to rejoin my students in a, in a, in a physical way. That said, this is the perfect opportunity, to really analyze where we are at as a system. And then really think thoughtfully about when we come back, how do we not only continue this really bold and ambitious work? But how do we operationalize it? And how do we do it in such a way that our system actually, that is thoughtful of the capacity that our system actually has to get it done? Um, because that, the last thing that I want us to do is over promise and under deliver, in the sense of being bold, just not necessarily just to be bold, but also being bold with the cognizant understanding of what does this pragmatically mean for our system? And, and how should we be having conversations around expectations, timelines, things of that nature for our community? Because I think that that's really where, for me at least, I want to focus a, a, a fair amount of time going into next year is because, is really just focusing in on, how are we not only communicating what we are doing to our community, but how can we be realistic in communicating what our expectations, our thought processes, wha- what our specific timelines are for, for initiatives? And the only way that that's going to be able to be, you know, even a remote possibility, is if we really build in some opportunities for, for board, senior staff and leadership, what have you, to really come to an understanding of where we all are at and where we individually think we need to head and, and to come to some, some consensus around, um, how do we communicate those things out? So that's all I have for right now. Obviously, I'll be, you know, continuing to think about, uh, from my perspective and from District Seven, what are some goals that I would really like to set for the board? But, but really, specifically, I just want to bring it back to how are we making this system a safer place for, uh, black and brown women throughout? Um, so yeah, I think I'll end there. Thank you very much.
So, um, before we move on, I do want to just synthesize back. One thing that, um, I want to be, um, really thoughtful about is that, board goals should be focused on us. And I only say that because as you mentioned, this last one around key initiatives, around pacing timelines and milestones, some sort of a centralized document.
Yeah.
When I, I hear it, it actually is work for somebody else, not the board, and that's, and that's that little nuance of, making sure that they're directed at us. Because if our goals are just giving people at SPS more work, then that feels less like it's our goal.
Yeah.
So I think there's ways to kind of navigate this, but I just want to elevate that. That one, when you, when you said centralized document, I was thinking, I don't necessarily want to make, I don't want to be giving Ellie, for example,
Right.
Works on our goal.
Yeah, absolutely. And so in that, and I appreciate that feedback, that's really helpful. Um, I think from my perspective, what, what I really just want to do is start a conversation about what that even looks like. You know what I'm saying? Um, and maybe we could do that work in a board retreat. Maybe we could continue to have conversations around that in work sessions or whatnot. But you're right, the last thing I want to do is create more work for staff. So even just having a conversation around what this potentially could look like could put, could be the first step for me.
And I think to your, I think to your point, we can actually name this goal as, you know, in 2021, we need to have two work sessions that, bring, bring this to force. We have to, so it could just be similar to, you know, our resolution, where we just said we were going to introduce policy zero zero four zero. We could set it as something a little bit higher level, broad like that.
Yeah.
As goal of ours, as opposed to saying, you know, create the document. We could say something like, we will have two work sessions to, you know, create a, some XYZ thing, but, but there's ways to massage it. I just wanted to elevate that, but, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Um, Director Harris.
Uh, mine are off repeated requests and, and I appreciate the requests, that have come forth with respect to board intra-communication and how we get there from here. I think several things will help. One, we're starting to do action plans at the end of some of our meetings. Two, uh, if our work sessions and committee meetings are being recorded, then we will get more timely information and I think that's fabulous. But the other thing I think that would be very helpful in terms of board intra-communication is, A, uh, to make sure that we get, uh, Erin's job filled as soon as possible, and Tina's as well, before we drive out Ellie, because that workload is backbreaking. And I hope that we can each find time to add a page or two occasionally, to the Friday memos and use that as a communication as tool as well. But, but I guess the other piece that would help me immensely in terms of these big issues, and I appreciate, we don't want to give staff more work, but, staff doesn't share their work plans with us and, and their ETAs and their project management. And I think sharing that would give us an enhanced, uh, understanding, of, of what is going on in big picture and allow us to, not have to beg for information, but, but already, do our homework and know where we are on the cycle or the continuum. And last is the old adage, to the best, as is possible, not to be blindsided. And to have to read information and incoming on social media or in the newspaper or on the radio when you're driving home, so you don't crash the car. I think we've gotten better at it. I think we've got a long way to go. Thank you.
Director Hampson.
Um, yeah, I have some pretty specific, um, thoughts about, uh, what I'd like to see us tackle next year. One, uh, the, the starting point for me is actually, um, educating ourselves as a board about the, uh, the, the, kind of the, um, history, uh, of school boards and the history of the, the various factors nationally and, um, in the state that impact, um, how we function. Uh, I think that they're not, we don't have enough of an understanding about, um, about those things. And, and we certainly, you know, we don't provide that as orientation for new board members coming in. And, um, and that kind of leads nicely to the, the second pieces, which, which is that I, I really want to make sure since we have, um, next, uh, at this time next year, we will have just elected, um, uh, possibly new or, um, continuing board members. But if we have new board members, then, um, we will want to make sure that we bring them in. And, and I believe provide them a more comprehensive, um, uh, onboarding than, um, than what you get at, at WASDA. And then just, you know, sitting down with senior staff. At, everything from, you know, uh, budget supports and, and it doesn't necessarily mean we have to do that. But, um, I think we need to be quite a bit more clear in, we, we have some of that written in policy. Um, maybe we need to be clearer in procedure as far as what that looks like, so that folks come in, uh, ready to hit the ground running. Uh, and also that part of that history should be something that we provide, because it is really critical. It's, it's a shock to realize, um, it, it doesn't really, you can know that, that we're subject to OPMA. Um, you can know that, you know, we can only do X, Y and Z. It's, you don't really understand it until you're in that position and have to really restrict everything that you do, um, because of, of how we're, uh, hamstrung, don't have staff, um, don't, you know, receive any pay or benefits. Um, so, um, to me, that's, that's something that I would like to see us, us work on. And then that goes to another big piece that I'm really interested in, which is, I would like for us to start talking about, um, potentially looking at moving to a policy governance model. Um, my understanding from, uh, and Director Percy and I had the opportunity to interview a former, uh, um, very well-respected former board member in federal way, um, who, who talked to us at length about their transition to a board, uh, to a policy governance model, something that Erin and I had been talking about quite a bit. And, um, it encompasses a number of the structural and relational issues that boards face, in working amongst them, amongst ourselves and then also with staff. Uh, so that, so that's, um, would be a top priority, uh, for me as well. And, um, and then, um, picking up anything, I, I certainly don't, um, in any way, disagree with other things that have been, that have been, uh, stated. Um, uh, I think the other, anything that we can do from a, a, a board standpoint to support, um, the prospective board members that might come in, um, any advocacy that we can do that would provide, uh, more support such that, um, you know, there, whether it's figure, can we give board members health insurance, for example? Um, I feel pretty awful about expecting people to run for an office for which there is, um, you know, inadequate compensation, to say the least. But also, um, just really puts people in a difficult position if your employment is at all at risk and then you end up without health insurance. And, and you're having to contribute at this level. I, I, it's just, it, there's no way that we can really have good, solid representation, um, when those are the, this, the cases. And we, we can't necessarily change state llama, but they're, um, you know, in the immediate term this next year. But we might be able, there might be some other things that we can do to make it possible. Um, and, or to make it, uh, more, more of a possibility for some. And then that, my last piece would be kind of around the board office and how that's structured, um, to support all of us and support our, our communication. As, uh, Director Harris said, that is absolutely no, for Ellie who's completely flying solo right now, um, that is not the situation that anybody should be in. I, it, it doesn't, um, it doesn't help anyone in this system for us to be, uh, so anemic in terms of our, our kind of administrative capacity as board members. So, um, so those are kind of, you know, again, all, always in line with our strategic plan goals and, and all the things that have been, um, stated thus far, I would hope that we would carry kind of much of the spirit of work that we did this year forward. And maybe even have a similar, or something that speaks to that, um, to, to make sure that that happens. And, you know, there's probably a lot of others, but I think that's plenty for now.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Vera Smith.
Thank you. Sorry about earlier. Um, I, I appreciate, um, a lot of the, um, suggestions we shared, definitely. And some of mine might, might touch on those a little bit, but, so I wanted to start by looking at, the actual, you know, what is, cause like, like you mentioned, some of this is going to be more staff work than our work. Um, and we don't want to, that's not what the point of board goals are. So I wanted to look at what are, what's our jobs, what's our duties? And so I, I was looking at policy, um, ten oh five, um, responsibilities and authorities of the boards, try to get an idea of like, what are the core pieces of our jobs and what should we be trying to build upon? Um, so one of those, um, I found under accountability, um, and just a piece of that, which I, I'm going to pull out of it is, to keep the public informed about district programs and progress. And I really feel like as a board, um, and I know some other members mentioned how it's difficult to do this work because we're so busy and, and there's so much on our plate. But I really feel one of our core, you know, core duties is to keep the public informed of what, not just our districts doing, but what we're doing. So I would love to find a, a way that we can systematize that, that we are better communicators with. Or just like, and maybe it comes from being an old reporter, that I feel like I have all this information. I go to every committee meeting and it all just sits in me. And I hate that. It all just, that information, everything I, I'm learning doesn't get anywhere. So I want, this is a personal goal, but I think all of us could benefit from finding ways to, to share out what we're doing, um, in committees, um, through our liaison roles and just as a board, you know, communicate with our, with our constituents. So something about that and I, and I appreciate, um, Director Harris's, um, Friday memo idea, because I know that has been mentioned before that we are, we are, you know, allowed to do that, and I think that is a great step there. The general public just knows to see that, that's maybe not the, the end all of it, but, you know, I try to do it on my own Facebook page or whatever. There's, I think there's just, again, maybe something we can look at as a board of how we can be, um, better informants and communicators to our public. Um, and then another part of this policy goes on to advocacy, where the board should serve as an advocate on behalf of the district, the students, the schools. Um, and I think about that and, and what our duty is to advocate for our, our district as a whole. And I kind of touched on this, uh, a previous board meeting about with Native American community and having, there's some factors, um, factors there in that I feel like I'm not part of that community. I'm not, you know, I'm not part of the Native American community directly, but I still feel a responsibility to bring some restoration to, to, um, conflicts. And, and it's not just that one community, all communities. I feel like part of our job should be to live out our restorative practices in our work as a board in our communities, because we have so many communities that are hurting for many different reasons, whether it's our principals out, they, um, had an abuse, something go on, they, they, um, they're not, they're not getting the services they need. We are certainly our special education department, I mean, it's not department, but our community, um, there's a lot of, um, struggles there, especially as they're not learning. So I feel like these things happen and we try to fix them as a district, but then there's so much restoration that's not done. And that hurt doesn't go away and it carries over to the next, the next drama, the next, you know, um, the next, news article that, that is critical. I want to find ways that as a board, we can really hone in on helping our communities, come back from the hurt and the pain and have those restorative practices and somehow, I, and again, I don't know what this is. I don't know if we hold sessions in community. Yeah, I, I understand. I'm just.
If you could zero in on a goal, that would be helpful here.
Well, maybe that's the goal. I think it's like to just find ways that we can help our communities, um, get the restore, restoration they need, uh, when they're faced with these conflicts. Cause, um, we each have in our own districts, you know, um, Leshy and, um, all, you know, um, what's the one we just had, um, the option school with the, they got, I'm sorry, I'm losing my names of schools here. Um, Thornton Creek, sorry. Um, Thornton Creek, sorry. Um, so finding, I don't know, just ways that we can help that, you know, our communities heal. Cause I think that is part of our job, um, not just on, you know, as, as a board, we're here to advocate and support our schools. So I don't know, I, again, like, maybe that's really squishy, wishy washy, but I really do feel like it's something that I think as a board, we can focus on if we, if we, um, prioritize it, so. All right, I will end there. Thank you so much.
Okay, Director Hampson, you had your hand up.
Um, yeah, I just, I'm sorry, Director Vera Smith, I just have to respond. You stated something that was very triggering to me, which is that you said you felt some responsibility to provide restoration for the Native American community. And that's a really dangerous place to go as a, well, that's what you stated and I just, we don't have to talk about it at this moment. But I don't actually believe that that's a, an appropriate, I, I know that you're coming from a good place with that. But it's a, it's a very, can I just finish what I'm saying? Um, a- as a member of that community where, and as a, with somebody that has very strong, um, personal connections to, um, very many of the people with whom you believe that you have this, um, role to provide restoration, I would ask you to, um, take some more time, um, before making that assessment and that there are other ways in which our, our board can be, uh, productive in making sure that, that community feels heard without, um, taking on a role that is, um, you know, what I would consider not respectful of, you know, of, of those folks in community. Um, and that they're not, you know, or, or even assuming that, that one particular, um, person or group represents all of that, that community. There's no monolithic approach. And, um, so there, there's been a number of things around that and, and I just have to take this moment to say, please, um, take some time to talk to your fellow board members who are members of that community, um, as well as taking, learning how to take a broader community approach to that. And, um, and yeah, I think that's just getting into a really dangerous area and I, I just need to say that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, and I use it as an example of how, again, like I feel like responsibility to all of our communities. Um, and that was just when I, I had spoken about recently, so I, I was just using that. I'm sorry. I definitely don't expect any of us to go into another group's community and expect like, hey, I'm going to save you and I'm going to fix this for you. That's not, and that's the last thing, that's the farthest thing from what I'm trying to say. I just say, I want us to figure out a way we can support, our, again, support our communities and in whatever way that means communicating between them and the district and, or just finding, again, I don't have the answer. I'm just trying to say like, I want us to not lose sight of that, there's a lot of hurt out there in different communities. And I'm not, you know, white or black or Asian, but there's still communities where if they're having a need for, for some, you know, sort of justice, I want to know and find out how I can support that and help them, that what they need there. So I, yeah, again, I'm just, um, I appreciate this conversation. Thank you. I'm so glad you said, what you said here, Director Hampson, and, um, I will, um, definitely take it all to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think she, I mean, I think what came up for me too, as you said, helping communities heal. And I want to just be really thoughtful that there's a way that we don't need to kind of, um, parachute in or white savior things, like we can, we can support or be part of or connect people. But I, I, I think anything where we'd be helping communities heal, taking a leadership role would be, um, very tricky, I think. So I think, um, I want to pull over at least two from our, our 2020 goals, which would be prioritize anti-racism and policymaking as a training. And then the other one is just to continue the 1620. And those are all I have today. Um, I know that we've all been on the, the, the call here for a long time. I know our brains are fried and we're all stressed and the world's really stressful. So I don't necessarily want to push too much more tonight to give folks some time to kind of sit steep in the information and let it, you know, kind of sink in. And then when we come back on December 5th, I will bring what I took as notes for this and will help our discussion. And then we'll just need to help kind of narrow, narrow down, zero in on some goals at the board retreat on December 5th. So if folks have nothing further on these items, anybody, anybody, anybody? Okay, as there is no further business on this agenda, uh, tonight's meeting will stand adjourned at seven twenty-four PM, Thursday, November 12th. And I will talk to you all very soon, if not tomorrow, or at least, um, at our board meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you.